Buenas tardes. Buenas noches. Good evening. Can you hear me? Jimmy Not says he can't hear me. Can you hear me now? Good evening, good afternoon, good evening. Buenas tardes, buenas noches. We are here today to do a workshop on affordable housing, really on the affordable housing crisis. And this is about production strategies. This is about adding more units of affordable housing, housing that is affordable. So this is a workshop. We're going to be getting a presentation by Ms. Leilani Hines, who's our director of our Housing and Neighborhood Services. I wanted to start off with just a quick statement here because I think that I don't know about my colleagues. But I'm one generation from having been homeless. In other words, my parents, at some point or other, were homeless. And so I grew up on stories of what that meant and the fear, and really the fear that that carried them through about the possibility that if one of them lost their jobs, they would not be able to make payments for housing. So we are affordable housing crisis now. Our city's population has not changed, yet we seem to have less and less housing stock every year. Our current vacancy rate is 1%. Obviously, that relying on inclusionary units will not get us to our RENA numbers, and that's that kind of artificial number that we have to get to. But why I hope we're here tonight is not just to talk about RENA numbers, but more importantly, what the needs are of our community. Our community is unable to afford increased rents. Sometimes those rents are increased by $1,000 a month. We need to find ways to create 100% affordable projects. To do 100%, we need to partner with 100% affordable housing developers to identify land for these projects. We also need to stop the loss of affordable housing, what we call workforce housing. And these are some of our neighborhoods that we see in East Side and Crown Heights, losing this workforce housing. We need to take a hard look at everything. Recently, I did meet with some Oceanside residents, and they're really aware of the $10 million in lieu fund that we have. And they even asked, well, can we use some of that to support some of these housing rents? Let me tell you, it was very, very hard to tell them, no, we really need to add more housing. So we do feel, and I hope council feels, the real urgency, the real need, the real desperate situation that we find ourselves, we as a community. And we have a thriving tourism industry that if we do not make sure that we have our workforce housing, how are these restaurants and hotels going to survive? So I just wanted to say, start off with that. And so workshop item is number one, receipt of a presentation of current and proposed affordable housing production policies and provide staff direction on the proposed recommendations. We're going to begin with a report by, as I said...
Oh, we need to do roll call.
Yes, I'm skipping over that. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Joyce. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss.
And my apologies. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now we're starting with a report by Ms. Leilani Hines, Director of our Housing and Neighborhood Services Department that has really, really grown in terms of demands for services in just the last, I want to say, five years. It's just, I want to say, tripled. So, Ms. Hines.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, the public that is here this evening to hear our presentation on the current housing crisis. Our homes are where we wait, where we start every day. They're places that we share with our loved ones that bring us comfort and safety. But for far too many folks, having a home, staying housed, is increasingly out of reach. Home building in the region has not kept pace with population growth that we've been seeing here in California, especially at all of the lower income levels. This situation puts a particular strain on the budgets of our extremely low and our very low income households who are paying rents with little remaining for basic necessities of transportation, food, the healthcare, and taking care of your kids. 65% of our renters are lower income. 63% of them pay more than 50% of their income towards rent. This high cost of housing contributes to homelessness, can perpetuate cycles of poverty, and can create inequities in housing wealth. For the broader economy, workers are limited to more affordable housing markets, making longer commutes to get to employment and therefore limiting the workforce available to companies here in Oceanside. As the mayor alluded to, we've got a very low vacancy rate, below the 3% that's normally considered a healthy balance in the marketplace, below the 3.9% countywide. So Oceanside's tight rental market means higher housing costs and making it the landlord's market. So to address this and help stimulate affordable housing production and improve access to homes for our most vulnerable and new housing development and resource programs for our overall community, we're here tonight to take that comprehensive look at our current housing production policies. And while the city does not itself directly control, produce housing, the city's policies, our development code, our programs, and our available funding sources influence that housing market. Tonight's staff hopes to receive direction from council on how to best leverage these tools in light of the city's limited funding and staffing resources in the most effective way to serve its citizens. So we'll start with RENA. You often hear that term, RENA, or formerly known as the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. It really forms the basis of our recently approved housing element that was certified by the state HCD and will be before U.S. Council for adoption this September 13. RENA sets the housing production goals to accommodate anticipated population growth for every locality in California. For Oceanside, over the next eight-year cycle, from 2021 to 2029, our new production goal is about 5,443 units. That goal then is categorized into various income groups. And of our total RENA, 36% of that goal is for our lower-income households and families. Surprisingly, that standard is set at $110,250 a year for a family of four. That's what the definition for lower income is under the state and the federal government. Each year, we report to state HCD our annual performance on the number of building permits that are issued for the purposes of determining progress towards RENA, and that's Table B that you see on the slide before you. And based upon the building permits issued for 2022, Oceanside's met about 25% of its overall housing goals and only 7% of its lower-income goals. The remaining RENA goal is about just over 4,000 units. This is somewhat consistent. We talk about RENA all the time and how difficult it is to meet. It's consistent with other larger North County cities like Carlsbad and Escondido that have only met 10% of their RENA goal thus far, and San Marcos, which has met 29% of its RENA goal. So projects have been brought before you at council for review. A lot of that discussion has been, how's this project moving the needle towards RENA? Well, tonight's focus is on the production of new housing and utilizing our tools and resources to get there. And to stretch our limited funding, as we'll explain later in our presentation, about gap financing opportunities. However, as the mayor alluded to in her discussion and her briefing before, staff does acknowledge that the preservation of existing units, whether they're actually deed restricted or what we call naturally occurring affordable housing in the marketplace, it's important. Maintaining that housing addresses those at risk of losing their housing, families moving out of the community that have been here for years, families living in overcrowded situations by choosing to double up with other families. So should council wish to direct staff for a future discussion to bring forward preservation and existing tenant needs, staff can return at a future meeting for that discussion. Unfortunately, tonight, we're going to focus on production. There's a lot to talk about here as well. So in recognition of those commonly acknowledged barriers, staffs identified four focus areas for meeting current and future demand to address barriers and develop effective ways of supporting diverse housing production. Production's needed at all the income levels, but particularly for lower income. As you've seen in our table, it looks like we're on target to meet moderate and above moderate goals. So our focus really is on those lower-income households and how do we best address their housing needs. Through prioritizing regulations that we employ, incentives for developers to build, as well as a commitment to using our public resources for affordable housing production. So with the advantages... apologize. One of our premier policy tools is inclusionary housing. That's how we get a lot of production done, and we've done that in the last few years, partnered with Density Bonus. For more than 170 jurisdictions in California, they employ an inclusionary housing program as a component of their strategy. Our policy was adopted originally in 1983 for the express purpose of meeting those housing needs for both lower and moderate-income households. So Chapter 14(c) of our city code establishes those housing obligations for residential projects containing three or more units. It requires developers to rent or sell 10% of housing units at restricted rents or prices that are affordable to low-income households for rental or low and moderate for homeownership opportunities, or if they choose to opt for the alternative of paying the in lieu fee. All the units are restricted for a period of 55 years. So with the advantages of state density bonus law, and you've seen a lot of projects come before you here in the chambers, since 2020, the city has seen an increase in housing developments paired with density bonus law and satisfying the requirements of inclusionary housing. The result has been, since 2020, we've got 24 projects in the pipeline now. 75% of them are rental housing products, 25% for sale products, totaling about 352 units for very low and low-income households. 64% of those units will be dedicated for just low-income households. The numbers that I gave you here don't reflect the 60-unit Greenbrier Village Development Project that's currently under construction. We consider that to be 100% affordable housing where the city tries to partner with affordable housing developers. So since 2020, we've been talking about inclusionary housing and staff, council-directed staff to have, to come back with some amendments. Phase one was completed in 2020. Phase two of that update process included an update to the in lieu fee and other necessary adjustments to facilitate and encourage the on- or off-site development of housing. That was just recently approved in December 2022. But more recently this year, we've had council request a revisit of some of those major components of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, specifically the set-aside requirement for affordable housing. So when we updated the policy in 2022 in December, we really didn't make any changes to the major tenants of that program. So still the 10% for new rental for low income and 10% for for sale, affordable for 55 years. We did grandfather-in completed applications, and that's inclusive of those SB 330 applications that have been filed. They'll be held to the standard that was in place before December 2022. So the updates were really more cleanup in nature, alignment with density bonus law, providing more flexibility. Apologize. So many of the projects that are already in the development pipeline, those will be grandfathered in. So any changes or direction that you provide to staff this evening will really apply to any future projects where those projects haven't even been thought of or applications have not yet even been submitted. So the current state statute and case law supports the city's authority to implement inclusionary housing for both rental and for sale development. But just like any other land use regulations, inclusionary policies must abide by criteria established through case law on regulatory takings. The state considers inclusionary housing ordinances to be a potential barrier to housing if they are too restrictive and even requires that the inclusionary housing policy be considered a governmental constraint on housing production when we do our housing element review. So specifically, inclusionary housing ordinances must not be considered confiscatory and requirements must not deprive property owners of a fair and reasonable return on their property. Inclusionary housing policies must encourage both affordable housing development as well as market rate housing. Specifically, AB 1505 provides state HCD the authority to review any inclusionary housing policy that would require more than 15% for lower income and to submit evidence, if requested, that that policy does not unduly burden building of housing. So as part of our 2022 update to inclusionary housing, we did complete an economic study by David Paul Rosen and Associates that looked at our existing policy and alternative solutions, looked at the financial feasibility of the impact of alternative scenarios on seven different prototypes. It looked at our in lieu fee. Using a very technical measure for economic impact, we used the residual land value. And based upon that measure, some of the prototypes were economically impacted. Include apartments with structured parking, apartments with podium parking. But those could be offset by combining incentives, offering a range of compliance alternatives to make those projects more financially feasible. That DRA study was published in early 2022, but it utilized 2021 market assumptions. We're now in 2023. Those market assumptions changed drastically from interest rates increasing, cap rates increasing, insurance, labor material shortages, increased costs there, and then what we anticipate are pending increases to our impact fees or specifically to our park fees. So with these changes in mind with the market, staff feels that it would be appropriate to update the economic study if the city considers any future amendments to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. So staff's recommendation to help with production of housing and for consistency with our North County neighbors, staff would recommend increasing the inclusionary set-aside for affordable housing from the 10% currently to 15%. However, we would request concurrently that you also look at raising the minimum project threshold for those smaller developments, so from three units to 10 units, as these smaller developments may have difficulty with economies of scale and being able to absorb the increased cost. And lastly, given the changes in the market conditions that we also complete, even though it's only 15%, that we do go back and do that economic study to determine that this is not unduly burdensome to the development industry. And then also any changes that might need to be made to make it consistent with state density bonus law. I did want to point out that the Housing Commission last week did review the inclusionary housing policy. They recommended that council consider completing that economic study because of the fact that they would like to see a 20% set-aside requirement. And also, as they've continued to recommend, that the affordability term be changed from 55 years to in perpetuity. And that if we are going to look at a change in the threshold requirement, that that also be studied in the economic analysis. So state density bonus law is viewed as the state's premier housing policy to encourage housing production and to help offset those costs. So by utilizing density bonus with its limited incentives but unlimited waivers that preclude density of development, the cost of providing affordable housing is offset by the cost savings from waivers and incentives and the revenue that's generated from those density bonus units. And so as previously presented, we talked about how pairing the two together can result in production of affordable housing. So under our current set-aside, 10% for low or moderate-income housing, developers here are entitled to receive that 20% density increase and one incentive for building housing for low-income. But for 10%, very low income, then that density bonus goes to 32.5% with two incentives and then those unlimited waivers in all cases. Should the city consider increasing that set-aside to 15%? Then, when it works with density bonus, you could max out to 50% density bonus if you do very low-income households with three incentives. Or if you choose to do 15% at low income, you get a 27.5% density bonus with one incentive. So when you're looking at increasing inclusionary housing, it's absolutely important to look at what that does in terms of the corresponding increase in density bonus law. And in some cases, increasing, for example, on the very low incentives that you receive. So recognizing the yearly amendments that we've been experiencing with state density bonus law, there's a new bill, AB 1287, the super-density bonus that's being proposed that incentivizes more middle-income and very low-income by stacking additional density bonuses on top of the max 50%. We really have to take a look at what's being proposed in inclusionary along with any density bonus policies that the state may be looking to amend or pass so that they both can work together and be compliant. In terms of processing time and by right, lengthy approval processes, you always hear, extends development time, tying up a developer's capital resulting in increased costs can lead to uncertainty. So when we reviewed our processing time for projects, particularly in our housing element, we did that analysis. We feel as staff that that processing time is pretty reasonable. To address the review processes and timing, the state itself has passed and strengthened numerous laws limiting local jurisdictions' review, requiring mandatory timelines. And these are known as the Housing Accountability Act and the Housing Crisis Act, which was SB 330 and now recently SB 8. So under the Housing Accountability Act, city's scope of review and decision-making is quite limited with required findings of specific adverse health and safety impacts that exist in order to deny a project. The Housing Crisis Act provides vesting rights of applicable rules to be applied to a project based upon the date that it was submitted and then provides specified timelines for review. By right, ministerial review processes can absolutely help with streamlining development processes, and they provide greater predictability for housing developers and therefore reducing costs. And as part of the city's housing element certification process, we went ahead and did that. Council approved the upzoning of certain sites identified for low and moderate-income housing and allowed by right ministerial review of affordable housing projects defined as having 20% or more of units for low-income housing, allowed that to be a by right process for those types of developments. So we're already doing a lot in this arena. So at this time, staff would recommend that perhaps we explore expanding that by right, by right ministerial review of affordable housing developments that might go beyond those sites identified in the housing element, maybe looking at those developments that aren't requesting waivers or incentives. But any recommendations that council would have for staff, we would bring back to council for future consideration. Land in California is absolutely a valuable commodity. So as part of the housing element process, we did do an inventory of all vacant and underutilized parcels that have development potential. Those are already listed in our housing element in Appendix B. This land inventory is currently provided on our Onward Oceanside website. And upon certification after September 13th and adoption of the housing element, our intent is to update that website with the information that reflects all these identified parcels with relevant information related to development potential. Additionally, as part of that annual housing performance report that we submit, all jurisdictions report on any available surplus property. Right now, the city has no available surplus property that's listed with the state. That's all available to the public, to developers on the state's public lands available for development website. Developers who are interested in getting notification of surplus lands can sign up and get all of those notifications. So staff recommends promotion of the housing inventory sites for new housing development. These sites have already been identified for future higher-density development opportunities. And then also making available information on public lands available for development that's collected by state HCD on our own website. Staff would also recommending updating its inventory of all city-owned land with an analysis of suitability for housing development. My understanding is that we may have done this in 2002, and so it's time for an update to look at what we currently do have and what the suitability is for those sites. And in doing that update, we would come back to city council once that's completed and report out on the availability of land. Following the theme of availability of land, we have a lot of stakeholders who do have access to available land. Not only the city in looking at surplus lands, but other public agencies like NCTD, other community stakeholders, such as our faith-based community, educational institutions have access to land that may be suitable for housing developments. And partnerships where they're viable should be explored. Combining housing with complementary and beneficial uses can offer cost savings and social environmental benefits. Many faith-based groups now, such as Bethel AME and Father Joe's Villages Turning Key Initiative, are answering that call to help vulnerable people in their community by addressing those housing needs. Currently, state law does allow for the reduction of up to 50% of a religious institution's parking in order to accommodate an affiliated housing development. SB 4 currently in being proposed this year will make it easier for religious and educational institutions to provide housing on their properties by allowing such housing as by right uses for ministerial review. Oceanside itself has taken its first steps towards civic-minded mixed use with its property and the development of the Oceanside Navigation Center that not only has the Oceanside Navigation Center, but is also home to our code enforcement officers and a training facility. NCTD has recently been more active in the development of its transit stations with agreements for development of the Carlsbad Village and Pointe City stations and the OTC area. Staff recommends that the city work collaboratively to outreach to our faith-based community and share opportunities for possible partnerships where land is suitable, continuing to work with NCTD to explore the feasibility of maximizing affordability of housing on their TOD sites along Sprinter lines, and then explore housing opportunities as new construction or renovation of our own civic assets come about. Tonight's focus really has been on strategies to increase the production of affordable housing. And so staff did not specifically address short-term rentals in our staff report. However, staff does recognize that short-term rentals do impact the overall supply of housing in the community, and their impact on our supply of housing is often a frequent concern that we hear from the community. And even to address those quality-of-life concerns, the council in 2019 adopted Chapter 24 of our city code to require our short-term rental operators to register for a permit, pay an annual fee in order to balance the economic opportunities there and for tourism, but also that legitimate need for quality-of-life issues for the surrounding community. but also that legitimate need for quality-of-life issues for the surrounding community. Acknowledging that STRs do also offer an economic opportunity for people who have been living in high-cost areas to continue to afford living in the community with a revenue stream, an additional revenue stream, Oceanside's regulations provide that flexibility and exempt those hosted units from this process. So, STRs have increased from 603 units to over 1,000 units between 2021 to 2023. That's an 84% increase. This was primarily due to the flood of those applications that came in in the years immediately following the adoption of our regulations. In the last year, we've seen a more modest decline in that increase to about a 13% increase. And so, while the impact of short-term rentals within high-price or rent, high-price rent areas of the city, like the coastal zone, may not directly impact affordability or the inventory of affordable housing, that's not the case when you start to look outside of the coastal zone. Those neighborhoods have housing costs that are much more attainable and affordable for our community. Currently, there are about 1,230 permitted STRs with 376 located in the non-coastal zone, and those represent about 3% of our short-term rentals. The concern here in these types of markets is that our homes are being purchased by our investors, who then rent them out on that short-term basis. Those units are then taken out of the permanent housing inventory. Some cities have sought more extensive regulations of short-term rentals, given the impacts of affordability and availability of housing, including limiting the number of short-term rentals, limiting them in certain areas, even banning short-term rentals. And in 2020, council did take action, a proactive step, by banning short-term rentals in density bonus developments. So, even though staff did not provide a review of our current short-term rental policy in the staff report before you tonight, staff is prepared to bring forward changes to our current policies, should council wish to provide that direction tonight. So, one of the biggest ways that we, as a city, can be more effective in producing housing has been in the development of our 100% affordable housing developments, such as Greenbrier Village Development, which is currently under construction, or Mission Cove that was built in 2017. These developments, we consider them public-private partnerships that really rely on tax credit financing, bond financing, along with a layer of other financing from master developers, the state, the county, or even the city. Tax credits and bonds really are the primary source of funding for 100% development projects. They are highly competitive. Typically, they do look for financial commitment from the city in order to what they call a tiebreaker when competing with other projects in other jurisdictions. And because of that competitive nature of those two funding programs and the scoring criteria that they have, that's how we determine and develop who, in terms of AMIs or income levels, who we're going to target, what affordability levels, if they're preservation deals or if they're new construction. We target whatever the scoring criteria maximizes their points. So, 42% in the Greenbrier, in the Greenbrier Village Development Project was tax credits, and the other financing that we call soft financing just fills the gap between that 42% and whatever the development costs are. Typical development costs, as you see in the staff report, looked at a couple of different projects in different jurisdictions, around $450,000 a unit. Subsidies from other sources, particularly public subsidies, range anywhere from $90,000 a unit to $150,000 a unit. So, but it is that layering, and you will typically see layering of four to six different sources of funding coming together where you leverage off of each other. So, in the case of Greenbrier, the city's subsidy was about $58,000 a unit. That equates to bringing in $8 of other resources for every $1 that the city is bringing in. Our resources are extremely limited. Currently, the city does receive a federal home entitlement annually of about $640,000. Every time the federal budget is up for discussion, we anticipate a cut in those home dollars. We did receive the ARPA Home ARP dollars of about $2.25 million. We are receiving permanent local housing allocation funds from the state of approximately $1 million a year. We have a current balance in our former redevelopment low-mod funds of about $2 million and a balance of about $10 million in our inclusionary in-lu fees. And we're not guaranteed the in-lu fees, as we have seen, projects are starting to do their prop, their lower-income units onsite instead of paying that fee. So, when we look at how all these funds are used, it's also important to note that with each of those funding sources, they each come with their own set of regulations, their own set of requirements of what types of activities you can fund, who's your targeted income group, they each have their own timelines for expenditure and the processes for using So, when we're looking from a financial standpoint of how do all these different strategies come about and what does it cost us? Well, when we're looking at deploying our funding sources, we're trying to be strategic in our investment. We look at what are the most pressing needs, what are arena goals, what's the funding available at the time, how do we leverage the opportunities that are available, what sources of funding work well together, all with the goal of maximizing our investment to the greatest benefit for the community. As shown in this table, with implementing the inclusionary housing and density bonus together, over the last four years, it's yielded 24 projects with over 350 units. When we've utilized our available local sources, partnering with affordable housing developers over an eight-year span, we've been able to produce 413 units. Those units are probably at a deeper affordability targeting than you'll see with inclusionary or density bonus. And that was, those projects to a tune of about $23.2 million of investment from the city. When you're talking about preserving units or where the city tries to buy down rents to make it more affordable, or we're preserving the affordable rent that may have previously been there but might be expiring to market rents, when we looked at what a low-income family could afford in a two-bedroom unit and what the market is for a two-bedroom unit, that gap is almost $1,200 a month or $14,000 a year. So, to do that simple comparison of having 100% affordable housing product at 55 years, when we apply that affordability gap over a 15-year period, to get to the same number of units, that $23.2 million investment of the city, it'd cost us about $325 million to buy down rents. So, staff is recommending that in order to best leverage its limited resources, provide benefit to our community, that we make funds available for the new construction of rental housing with the issuance of a notice of funding availability, City of San Diego just released their own, making available at least $6 million from our Home ARP funds, our PLH funds, and some inclusionary housing funds, marrying those with a very, what we consider to be the golden ticket of 80 project-based vouchers, a maximum of 30 of those coming from our HUD-VASH program, it's the program for our homeless veterans. Because of the project-based vouchers, that does require from HUD that we go through a formal NOFA process, and that we're targeting our population groups would be at-risk and homeless seniors and veterans, based upon the significant cost burden we're seeing that are facing extremely low and very-low-income households, particularly seniors, and that the progress that doing new rental construction for these income groups could achieve in meeting RINA. It's anticipated that even these funds, the $6 million with the project base, would probably likely only support one sizable development opportunity. So, with that, that concludes staff presentation, and we're available for questions and discussion.
Thank you very much. How many, how many people have signed up to speak?
We have 45 speakers signed up.
Forty-five. Okay. So, we're going to go two minutes each, two minutes each. My apologies. Forty-five is an hour and a half. So, but we do have an interpreter that I see wasn't interpreting anything so far. I don't know if anyone, they were? Okay. Entonces si tenemos un intérprete hoy, esta noche, es decir, y si necesitan intérprete, entonces si tenemos alguien para poder traducir, okay? Y cada persona va a poder hablar por dos minutos en vez de tres. Perdónes que tenemos 45 personas que quieren hablar. Y 45 con dos minutos es hora y media. So, with the deepest apologies, I know you all want to say something, and this is very, very important. We understand how important this is to you. We are going to be at two minutes each, all right? And we're going to go ahead and get started.
Okay. As I call your name up, we have two available podiums. Please come on down. I have been informed that our document camera is not working, so if you have something that you want to display on the screen, please hold it up in front of you, and I'm pretty sure KOC T will be able to pick that up. So, our first speaker is Ron Dwyer Voss, to be followed by Helene Bell, to be followed by Daniel Dominguez, to be followed by Larry Weiner.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Ron Dwyer Voss. I'm a resident of Oceanside, an alternate on the Housing Commission, although the views I'm sharing are my own. I've been around the affordable housing industry for 30 years, and I just know you're in a tough spot. You're sitting between the public good and capital interests, and that's a tight squeeze to be in. I want to clarify some things that, some myths that have been spoken at this mic in different venues. It's often said that inclusionary housing will raise other housing costs for other folk. Yet, we have numerous studies and court cases that show that's not the case, that inclusionary housing does not get passed on to other homeowners. And in fact, in some communities in California where inclusionary requirements were lowered, housing costs went up. So, it's, it doesn't follow the myth that you're going to pass costs on to other Oceansiders. The other is it'll slow production. There's very little evidence that inclusionary policies slow production in growth markets. And as Director Hein's material showed you, we're definitely in a growth market here in Oceanside. So, I'd encourage you to look through sort of the scare tactics of the BIA and other interest groups that'll want you to say you're going to hurt developers and look ahead to your citizens and your voters, and to what we know from the data and from the court cases, that inclusionary works, it's reasonable, and it's, it's part of your job as a council to set zoning requirements that put high-density housing where high-density belongs and low-density housing where it belongs and commercial where it belongs. And you're not doing anything else here, but stop saying that it's the public good that a set aside of housing is affordable. Otherwise, the city economic disparities get even more out of hand than they are, and you just have to walk out the front door to see that.
Thank you. Helene Bell?
Hi, my name is Helene Bell. I also answer to Elena. I noticed in the report, the pipeline chart had a list of 25 projects. Greenbrier Village had the highest percentage units of, for very-low income at 98, but there were 40% of the list had zero for VLI. And I don't know how we can achieve our Obrina quotes at that rate. I enjoy living in Oceanside. One reason is I bought over 30 years ago, which makes it more affordable for me. I respectfully submit that I remember when a previous council approved high-rise hotel construction on public land, giving the impression a tourist population was more important than the residents. But that was another era, and you have the opportunity to show the city is a, is as concerned about housing for hard-working residents who make less than the San Diego County AMI as it is about attracting a ten, a tourist to our lovely city. Thank you for allowing me to speak candidly, and I'm hoping our electeds will think outside of the box and aggressively attract and support 100% affordable housing projects. I'm in favor of raising the inclusionary housing limit to 15% or higher. I understand the Oceanside Transit Redevelopment project is on public land, so please require a minimum of 25% of the units for low-income residents. It would be encouraging if this council were proactive, especially with an election year approaching. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Daniel Dominguez?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, honorable councilmembers. My name is Daniel Dominguez. I'm a long-term Oceanside resident, and I'm here to talk about the situation, the housing situation. I have four children that grew up in Oceanside. None of them can afford to live in Oceanside, and they all have good jobs. We do, what we're doing now is not work. The chart that Ms. Hein's put up at the RINA numbers, I did some calculations. At the current rate, it's very low. To meet our RINA numbers is going to take 130 years, based on what they produced in the last three years. The low is 60 years to meet RINA numbers. For moderate and above moderate, it's seven years for moderate, four and a half years for, for above moderate. So, the housing is skewed. I mean, we're producing plenty of moderate, plenty of above moderate, but not enough very-low and low. We need to raise the inclusionary housing to at least 15% or higher, as one of the other speakers spoke about. We need to go after 100% financing of affordable projects, and we do need to limit short-term rental. They are sucking the market dry for affordable housing. And finally, the transit center, we need to demand at least 25% of that be affordable housing. And then one last note, I was here last week, the Tremont Project, they built 17-unit and demolished a duplex that was affordable and replaced it with one studio apartment. And that, we can't do that. That's going back. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Larry Warner. I'm with SDO P, and my son and his kids live with us because they cannot afford, they work in Oceanside, or he works in Oceanside, cannot afford to live here. I would suggest that we raise the inclusionary housing to at least 15%, not 20%. Carlsbad is currently at 15%. We're at 10%. That's just embarrassing. I would, I also would suggest that we contact the Oceanside Transit Redevelopment and ask for 25% of units being low-income. This project is on public land and should be held to a higher standard as such, and use as an example of what we want in Oceanside. Thirdly, I support, I encourage you to support 100% affordable projects. I think Greenbrier Village is a great example of that, where San Diego County Housing Corporation, National Core, San Diego County No Place Like Home Funds, plus our own money for Oceanside, made that project happen. Let's keep doing that kind of thing. And then, one of the things that was suggested by the presenter, I support the city assistance gap financing, the $66 million to be approved tonight. And I got 31 seconds. Tonight, we have a chance to make a statement. The speaker before me said we made a statement a few years ago, tourism above residents. But today, we can make a different statement. Residents are important. Those people who, who work here are important. Those young families, we want to stay here, are important. Hopefully, tonight, by what has passed, we will make that statement.
Thank you. Charlotte Jones?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Jones. I'm a retired veteran and a senior citizen. Earlier this year, I was asked to move out of my apartment that I had been living in for five years so that the owners could do renovation. So while standing in the complex was costly, the alternative would have been even more so. My rent was increased six hundred and thirty dollars per month, plus unexpected and unexplained expenses. Even though apartments are available and deemed moderate and low-income housing, I could not afford to move into those places. So I moved into one of the renovated apartments. Low-income, moderate-income housing does not prove true for most of the citizens in our city. Something must be done to stop the displacement of families as it adds to the homeless population in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, one twenty-seven, Sherri Lane. Number one, let's be realistic. Let's reset low-income and affordable to indexing at minimum Social Security, period. Two, allow businesses and commercial property owners to take vacant storefronts and empty manufacturing sites and repurpose them for low-income rentals. And let the city council set the number of years that they have to be kept at that rate and at what's establishment. Four, take and use vacant city property for designated low-income ready-builts like mobile homes, mini homes, et cetera. Five, dual-purpose homes, as an example, for over at the parks, for security in exchange for home sites. Let's consider for mobile home communities or for mini homes. Six, let's look for establishing what is allowed within our city code for mobile home park districts with the help of the city to co-finance those districts to secure the safety of our seniors and families within the manufacturer home communities. So we're gonna season that threat, okay? And finally, two other points. One is, hey, let's look at group parking facilities when developing apartment developments and mandatory development fees for those. Think outside the box, please. Even communal villages like senior care facilities, but all age.
Thank you. Shelley Parker? Follow by Teresa Perez. Perez? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Shelley Parker, Rancho San Luis Rey. I am speaking for myself, but I am a member of the Housing Commission. First, I want to say, I've had two people tell me this week that they're leaving Oceanside because they're tired of stepping over homeless people. Now, I know that's not part of the discussion, but they are homeowners and they're leaving, okay? So we really actually have to take a look at this. I've also come to city council meetings and listened to city council members say that they're tired of people standing up and talking about developments when you guys' hands are tied and you cannot do anything about because we have these numbers we have to meet. But we can do something, yes, we have to meet numbers, but we can do something about the way that, and what is being built. And if we, I believe we should have at least twenty percent inclusionary housing because as a part of coming to, through planning, you have the density bonus go on. And if you're at ten percent and you add a density bonus, then you come down to almost nothing. So if you don't have at least twenty percent, you're never gonna get anything built. And I also agree that the transit should be at least twenty-five percent. And this inclusionary housing in lieu fee should be raised as high as we possibly can do it because this is money that we could spend to help build a hundred percent affordable housing. We can do these things, but we haven't done it. This fee has not been raised in ten years and there was pushback when we tried to raise it. So I think there's many things that the council, planning, and this city can do if they actually want to make sure that people can live here that just have less money than millionaires.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Teresa Perez. I'm community organizer with San Diego Organizing Project and I'm an organizer in San Mary Star of the Sea Church. And I see the need every day. So we had an event in the San Mary related to housing. More than a hundred people show up to the event. Every week and every place, I find at least one person that are looking for help. Then the rents have been increasing, five hundred, almost a thousand. Then people are getting evicted because they say that they're skewed and they're gonna remodel the apartment if they just to increase. There are no resources. I don't even want to give the list of the low-income housing because there are no available. So I see the need. So I'm here to ask you, like, please, support the things that can help. There is a crisis. There are something that you can do about it today. And I support and I ask you for your support, raise the inclusionary housing at least fifteen percent immediately. Support the new a hundred percent affordable housing, limit short-term rental, and in the Oceanside Transit Redevelopment, twenty percent of units for low income. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Cruz Moreno?
Hi, my name is Jasmine and I'm seventeen years old. I am part of Saint Mary's Star of the Sea and of San Diego Organizing Projects. I lived in Oceanside my whole life and I've gone to the same church for seventeen years, which is where I received all my sacraments. I've lived in the same house, I lived in the same house for twelve years. We moved out and rented a two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment for two thousand one hundred. After we got told they wanted to renovate, but the cost was going to increase, making a two-bedroom, two-bathroom almost three thousand dollars, not including bills, parking, or the trash takers, which would be an additional four hundred dollars altogether. For five months, we looked for a house. No one accepted us due to not making enough. My dad is the main source of income. On his days of sickness, he goes to work regardless of the conditions he's in. He had a liver problem but continued working because there's rent to pay. He works full-time and after work takes extra jobs every day, making him work from six A M. to six P M. That's a twelve-hour shift. After work, he has church practices, so I only see him come in and out of the house. You may ask, where's my dad? And he's not, he's not here because he's making sure we have food on the table and a place to live in. Where's your dad is something I asked my mom and she said, he's working. He can't make it to your awards ceremony. It's something my siblings and I had to deal with because he had to work, missing our ceremonies but also missing a relationship with him. And this August, I saw a young homeless woman in her twenties and I took her to buy some clothes and food. She told me at the age of seventeen, she was kicked out of her foster home. No one helped her and a minimum of fifteen an hour isn't going to pay her rent. Every day I continue to see more and more homeless. As you can see, this rent problem affects everyone, affecting families, creating more homeless and less workers here in Oceanside because they're moving further away due to this problem. I pray you take this message to heart so we can come together and find a solution. God bless your heart.
Thank you, Jasmine. Inez Williams?
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. My name is Inez Williams and I'm the chair of your Housing Commission. And so I'm here today to speak to the council about everything that's already said, but also want to speak to the council because we can come together and we can have this meeting, but we have a divided council. So when it goes on the screen and it goes for the vote, we have a three-two vote. So I'm here to say, listen to the heart of your constituents. These are your voters who have come out tonight. These are the individuals who are gonna be voting you back in office during the 2024 election. And so I'm saying, we're here. You called us here. You said, what is the issue? What can we do to move forward? We need you guys to work together to help us to move forward with the agenda that is before us. Yes, we need more affordable housing. Build more affordable housing. And the plan has already been laid out for the council. How do you do that? The fee, in order, the fifteen percent inclusionary fee, it doesn't require you to do a study. If you go to twenty percent, then you have to do a study. Get the fifteen percent. We need some immediate relief here within the city of Oceanside. And so my position and my stance as chair of your Housing Commission is to amuse you to build more affordable housing and listen to the people who have come out to speak, the people of Oceanside, the residents of Oceanside, who are hurting people who live in this city but can't afford, who work in this city but can't afford to live in this city because we don't have affordable housing.
Thank you. Cristina Moreno, and thank you very much. She'll be using an interpreter. Cristina Moreno.
Hola, mi nombre es Cristina Moreno. Tengo veinte años viviendo en Oceanside. Pertenesco a la parroquia Santa María Estrella del Mar.
Hello, my name is Cristina Moreno. I have been living in Oceanside for twenty years. I belong to Saint Mary's Star of the Sea Parish.
Necesitamos una solución lo más pronto posible porque las corporaciones están explotando a las personas que vivimos en apartamentos. Los precios son exagerados.
We need a solution as soon as possible because corporations are exploiting people who live in apartments. The prices are exorbitant.
Les pedimos que ustedes nos den una solución porque para mí la solución no es poner seguridad para correr a las personas que no tienen hogar y mandarlos a los cerros donde nadie los mira. Todos tenemos derecho a vivir una vida digna como hijos de Dios.
We ask you to give us a solution because for me, the solution is not to put people who have not, who are homeless and send them to places where they cannot be seen. We have the right to live a dignified life as children of God. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Jasmine Garcia? No, perdón. You are... Si, Jasmine Garcia, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Y si necesitas intérprete?
Sí.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Jasmine Garcia. He vivido en Oceanside por diecinueve años. A mi familia somos cinco, tres niños y dos adultos. Ah, viví por tres años en la comunidad de la Corona. Vivía en un estudio. Cuando me desplazaron, mi departamento tenía muchos problemas. No servía la estufa, el ababo y otras cosas. Y además teníamos ratones y cucarachas.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Garcia. I have lived in Oceanside for nineteen years. In my home, there was three adults and two children. And I lived there in the Corona community for three years when I was displaced. My apartment had a lot of problems. The stove was not working, sink and other things were not working. And we also had mice and cockroaches.
Cada vez que yo iba a la oficina a pedir que me arreglaran los defectos de mi estudio y que atendieran las condiciones inusuales, me decían que no lo podían hacer, que si no me gustaba, me podía mover a otro lugar.
Every time I went to the office to ask me to fix damages and take care of the unhealthy conditions, they told me that they couldn't do it, that if I didn't like it, I didn't have to be there. I could go somewhere else.
Otros vecinos y yo nos vimos obligados a salir. Estas son una de las cosas que hacemos los, que hacen los dueños de los apartamentos para desplazarnos.
Other neighbors and I were forced to do so. These are some of the things that apartment owners do to displace us.
No siempre tenemos la posibilidad de mudarnos a otro lugar por los precios. Esto afecta nuestro estado emocional y físico.
These are, no, we don't always have the possibility to move to another place because of the prices. This affects us emotionally and physically and our physical state.
Uno vive con mucho estrés por no tener un lugar donde vivir. Estoy aquí para contarles mi historia y pedirles que inmediatamente aumenten la vivienda inclusive al veinte por ciento.
We live with a lot of stress because you don't have a place, we don't have a place to live. I'm here to tell you my story and ask you to immediately increase the inclusionary housing to twenty-five percent.
Todos merecemos vivir en una vivienda digna. Mi esposo y yo trabajamos solo, ganamos treinta mil al año. Necesitamos vivienda justa para familias que ganan un salario como lo nuestro. Por favor, ayúdenos. Gracias.
We all deserve to live in a decent housing. My husband and I both work, but we only make thirty thousand dollars a year. We all deserve to live in affordable housing. Please help us. Thank you.
Gracias. Mariel Castro, and Mr. Interpreter, if you could hold the mic up to your mouth?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Like, right here. There you go. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mariel Castro. He vivido en Oceanside por veinte años en la comunidad de la Corona.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariel Castro. I have lived in Oceanside for twenty years in the Corona community.
Me siento muy agobiada con la situación que estoy viviendo. Los dueños de los departamentos, no vivo donde vivo, ya nos quieren dar contrato por un año. Ahora vivimos con contrato de mes por mes.
And I feel very overwhelmed with the situation I'm living in. From the apartments where I live, they no longer give us a one-year contracts leases. We now live in a month-to-month lease.
Esto les facilita de que nos aumenten la renta más seguido y que nos desplacen cuando ellos quieran. Vivo diariamente con la incertidumbre de que si al fin del mes, del mes, me van a dar una notificación de que tenemos que salir con el pretexto de que van a dar una notificación.
This makes it easier for them to increase the rent more often when they want to. I live daily with the uncertainty of what if I, at the end of the month, are gonna have a notification that we have to leave under the excuse that they were going to have renovations for the apartments.
¿De dónde? De que van a renovar la, the departamentos. Todos tenemos derecho a vivir en una vivienda digna. Así que estoy aquí para pedirles que hagan todo lo posible para que apoyen, apoyar al cien por ciento proyectos de viviendas accesibles que no pongan barreras a los que quieren conseguir vivienda accesible.
We all have the right to live in a decent housing. So I'm here to ask you to do everything you can to support one-hundred percent affordable housing projects. Don't put up affordable barriers in Oceanside. Housing is our need for everyone. Thank you.
Okay. Gracias. Gabina Martinez?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gabina Martinez. He vivido en Oceanside por veinte años y vivo diariamente con la incertidumbre de no tener una vivienda donde no tenga el temor de que me pueden desplazar.
Good afternoon. My name is Gabina Martinez. I have lived in Oceanside for twenty years and I live with the uncertainty of not having a home and fear of being displaced.
He escuchado que tienen planes de renovar el centro de transporte y que en los planes está construir viviendas.
I have heard that they have their plans to renovate the transportation center and in the plans is to build housing.
Hay planes de incluir viviendas accesibles para nosotros?
Are there plans to include affordable housing for us?
Vivienda para familias que ganan menos de cuarenta mil al año?
Housing for families that make less than forty thousand a year?
Apoyaría este proyecto si se dedicara al veinticinco de la vivienda a vivienda accesible nosotros.
¿El veinticinco por ciento?
Si se dedicara al veinticinco por ciento de la vivienda accesible. Si se dedicara al 25% de la vivienda accesible.
Would you support this project if 25% of housing was dedicated to affordable housing?
Nosotros también merecemos vivir a una vivienda digna.
We deserve, we also deserve to live in a decent housing as well. Thank you.
Gracias.
Gracias. Steve Burrell.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, council members. Steve Burrell, resident of Oceanside, California. And I'm here because I'm a volunteer with AARP and as a part of our efforts to help support communities be more age-friendly. And so I think we have a critical situation with housing. That's why we're all here. It's for, not only for seniors, but for everyone. You can see the room tonight. It's a cross-generational issue. It's a cross-class issue. And what I want to do is just say that about the aging part, we're the, second to the community that's growing the fastest. And so we need to start taking care of business now because it's only going to get worse. But what I would ask you, members of the council and mayor, is to have a sense of urgency. This community, all of us, should have a sense of urgency about this issue. So I would like to see, starting now, raising the inclusionary housing limit to 15%. Do everything possible to support 100% affordable housing. We need to have creative financing to find a way to do that. Then let's do that. Limit short-term housing. It's taking housing away. It's raising the prices. Can tell you one situation I happen to know of right in Brown Heights, where somebody bought the building and they're flipping it and they're offering the three-unit apartment that is there as short-term house. To me, that just reinforces everything I believe about the injustice of this situation and how it affects people there. And I pass it every day. And it makes me angry, to tell you the truth. Limit short-term housing. And do not support the transportation redevelopment project unless there's 25% allocated toward low-income house.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'd like to say, seniors deserve the right to affordable housing. They deserve to live in dignity because they can afford to live here. And we need to do what we can to support everybody's interest in this issue because it does affect everyone.
Thank you. Candy Johnson. Followed by Patty Kaye. Do we have Candy Johnson? Okay. Patty Kaye. Here she comes.
Thank you, Lani and staff, for all the facts and figures. I want to say that the housing element plan has been rejected by the state at least twice, I think. And I read that it was due to be resubmitted August 15th. Is that true? If so, what is the purpose of the workshop if it's already been resubmitted? Does anybody have that answer? If, if it's not, if we don't have a plan accepted by the state, my question is, can the developers go in and bypass all the, you know, speed it on through and develop anyway and get approval? Because if the state keeps rejecting it and we don't get established...
It was submitted and yes, it's consistent. So it's...
What's that?
It was approved.
On the August 15th?
Well, it's approved. I don't remember the date.
Why are we in the workshop after it's been approved, though? Is the question, I guess.
That's a, you don't have to address that. Just address what's before us.
Oh.
If you can.
Well, okay. So Oceanside is not a city. If we wanted to move to the city, we would have moved to a city. But with these developments, it's a beach town. It's a tourist town. It always has been. So the impact, at least downtown, on the coast highway has not been productive to the goals that you want. That's what I do not understand. Do the people here understand that the high-rise monstrosities that are downtown in Horn Street and Nevada and Oceanside Boulevard, all those units that nobody likes and are, you know, only address a handful of affordable units? And yet you're impacting, not you, but they are impacting the quality of life in our town, not a city. We don't want to be a city. Because all the rest of the units, 150, 160, are at market value. What? Oh, it was a minute. Okay, sorry.
Thank you very much.
The point is, the things that have been approved are not addressing the low income and the market housing need.
Thank you.
So why are they being approved?
Thank you very much. Vince Loefney, followed by Linda Walsh.
Hello, Oceanside. My name is Vince Loefney and I'm a District Four resident since 1991. That means I've observed Oceanside politics for the last 32 years. Today's workshop topic is about leveraging our resources to build affordable housing in Oceanside. Now, from my point of view, it is critical that we include the affordable housing that exists in Oceanside today. By maintaining mobile home parks, we can prevent creating 2,000-plus more homeless citizens. The way to increase affordable homes in Oceanside starts with not losing the existing inventory of affordable homes for retirees, veterans and the financially challenged citizens and taxpayers of our community. Manufacture Fair Practice Act was adopted in '82 and implemented in '85. At the, at the beginning of this, it says the stated purpose of the ordinance is to protect residents of such parks from unreasonable rental increases while at the same time preserving for the park owners a just return on their dollars. So how is the Manufactured Home Fair Practice Committee protecting the renters? According to Oceanside's website, there are 17 mobile home parks with 2018 rent-controlled spaces. The city inspection report shows four mobile home parks that are not in compliance with the Fair Practices Annual Report and Inspection. They being El Camino 76, Laguna Vista, Ocean View and Pacific. However, there is no explanation of on what part of the annual report or inspection were failed. This missing explanation is especially important in Laguna Vista's case because Manufactured Home...
Thank you.
Suspended.
If you could wrap it up.
Now, it says, "Presentation of current and proposed affordable housing production policy." While I want to repeat, from my point of view, it is critical that we include the affordable housing that exists in Oceanside today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Vince. Ms. Walsh.
Good evening, council and mayor. Linda Walsh, I'm the CEO of Mobile Home Advisory Committee, assisting mobile homeowners throughout San Diego County. This is our report that we just compiled with UCSD researchers and serving seniors. And in it, there is a section on urgent steps that need to be taken. And I will share this with any of you who want to look at it. Mobile home parks are the largest form of affordable housing in California, but they're vanishing as rent control has eroded. Parks are being sold and converted. Two parks in Oceanside have closed. Five parks have been sold to equity investors. These are homeowners who pay property taxes on all maintenance and utilities. The only thing they rent is the cement pad the home sits upon. The average cost to rent a parking space in Oceanside is $220 a month. Space rents cannot be compared to apartment rents at market rate. The average rent in Oceanside is currently $3,350. The average social security income check is $1,734 a month. The current wages needed to live in Oceanside North County this year are $47 to $49 per hour. Low income is defined as $100,000 a year. That's not what seniors are getting. Per Sandag and Census data, a large population increase is expected in Oceanside over the next five years, 97% of which will be seniors with no plan on where to house them. Mobile homeowners include many retired and disabled veterans who bought the only homes they could afford. They are not subsidized by anyone. They rely on their military base hospitals and commissaries for medical care, food and necessities. If even one more mobile home park closes, seniors and veterans will be forced out of their homes. The largest percentage of newly homeless in San Diego County are seniors and veterans. The largest marine base in the United States is Camp Pendleton here in Oceanside, in addition to the naval base and Miramar Air Station in San Diego.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Pat Frazier.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez and council members. My name is Pat Frazier. I've been a permanent resident of Oceanside since 1971. That's about 50 years. Oceanside is a great place to live. And I believe that every citizen of Oceanside, no matter what their socioeconomic status is, all deserve a place we call home. When we leave this meeting tonight, as we enter our home, we will all use our garage door opener, a key or some remote device to enter that place where we live. I'm inviting you and everyone in this room to pause just for that brief moment and think about how fundamental of a right it is for every citizen of every district to have a place they can afford to live and call home. So my appeal to you tonight, Mayor Sanchez and council members, is to vote and negotiate for measures and contracts that support that fundamental right. Vote for all the things that have already been said. Short-term rentals. Do what you can to support 100% affordable projects. Hold projects on public land to a higher standard. And finally, vote for and raise the inclusionary housing to 15%. All of these changes will directly or indirectly affect the opportunity for a home for someone in your district that they can afford. This is just a gentle reminder from one neighbor to another that every home and every new development needs the support of regular workers and white-collar workers and blue-collar workers, police officers, teachers, housekeepers. What do we have in common? We all need a place that we call home. We appeal to you to vote to make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John McDonald. McDowell.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. We're talking about an affordable housing crisis. And I just wanted to focus on those three words for a moment. First, the idea of affordability. It's not just a housing problem. This is an affordable housing problem. The shortage of housing means that people cannot afford housing. And even if they can, the competition for available housing is so fierce that people are driven out of the market. And the word crisis, so we toss words around, right? And they're in headlines and what have you and on the news. This really is a crisis. So people are unable to find places to live. We hear and read in the paper and have heard some tonight about unhoused people. Well, the, the solution to unhoused people, the reason people are unhoused is because they don't have housing. So... What can we do? So we've heard other speakers and we've heard staff recommend increasing the inclusionary housing limit to 15%. That's important. That's a start. We need to promote 100% inclusionary housing. When we look at the transit center, our transit-oriented development, well, it would be nice if it really were transit-oriented. That's a conversation for a different time. But what we can certainly do is require that at least 25% of those housing units be for affordable housing. And think about things like where the transit center is. It is adjacent to transit. It's adjacent to the jobs that we've been talking about. Someone mentioned at the beginning of this meeting the concern that the hospitality industry may suffer because of the lack of housing. My concern is that the people who work in that industry are going to suffer because of the lack of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Richardson.
Good evening. So what are we doing here, anyway? I mean, obviously, the elephant in the room is the state mandating you to do things and you're terrified to go against the state. I read this letter that came from the Department of Housing and Community Development. I've never read such a childish, kindergarten-ish letter in my life. They spoke down to you like you were kindergartners and that you had to behave. Why do we tolerate that? Why aren't we pushing back to the state like other cities, like Huntington Beach? So I, I don't understand why you don't have the courage to do that. Now, the other issue is, I've heard, spoken tonight, and I feel for people who feel like, in fact, I heard somebody say, "We have a right to live here." No, you don't have a right to live here. My grandparents lived down on the strand in 1940s. I can't afford to live there now. I talked to a small businessman today and he had to move to Valley Center to afford it. So what makes anybody feel like they have a right to live here? I think that you need to understand that, that this is, it's a market-based economy and that you should not, not increase the affordability requirement. In fact, you should get rid of it. And I don't believe it. I think it's a lie that it doesn't, somebody said it doesn't increase the cost. Somebody has to pay for that. Who pays for that? How can you say it doesn't increase the cost of housing? It, it definitely does and it goes to the people, the remaining. If it's 10%, the other 90% have to pay for that. So it's all, I urge you not to increase it. In fact...
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Reverend Stephen Lay Williams.
Thank you. My name is Reverend Stephen Williams and I am the new interim minister of Palomar Unitarian Universals Fellowship in Vista and a hopeful new resident of Oceanside. I'm here in both capacities. First, because it is, of course, my job to remind us that as human beings, no matter our religious or spiritual persuasion, we have a moral obligation to care for each other, to ensure that no one is unhoused or put in a position where they can't provide for their family's basic needs. Second, because I'm in that position myself. I was hired in May to start at this position August 1st. From our home state of Oklahoma, my family has been looking for housing with the help of our congregants for four months. And I had to leave ahead of them to start my job. I'm staying with a church member, thankfully. We've spent hundreds of dollars in application fees. We've been turned down for multiple houses, often before we even apply because our credit scores are below 650 after several years of seminary, three years of pandemic and a terrible health year for my wife and me. We want to join your community and we can't. We're living apart in the stress of uncertainty. And I'm an outsider, but I want to be here to do my job and be part of the solution for this problem. This unregulated market affects locals horrendously and keeps people from moving here as well. The homelessness crisis is inhumane. It is ungodly. Please remember your human duty and let love for your fellow people into your hearts as you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Brown.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Kelly Brown and I am here on behalf of the Building Industry Association of San Diego County. It is our job as an industry to provide housing for San Diego residents where they can work, live and play close to home. Unfortunately, barriers to build housing for San Diegans are so strong that local families can no longer afford housing in San Diego. They are forced to commute hours a day from places like Riverside to work in our cities. As the cost to build continues to increase, the regulatory environment should not continue to add costs and make housing more unaffordable. Research has also shown that land use regulations that go above state requirements lead to longer development timelines, a larger mismatch between housing and jobs and greater racial inequality. The ordinance that was recently passed in December was the result of a study by DRA based on 2021 assumptions and released at the beginning of 2022. At that time, the study pointed out that at 15% inclusionary, some types of housing would incur a decrease in land value. Beyond 15% decreased land values for most types of housing. When the percentage of subsidized units in a project increases, the land value diminishes and financing capabilities diminish. The direct result of the decrease in land value is less property is sold for development in other areas. Before changes are made to the mandatory inclusionary requirement, a study should be conducted to look at the impact of an increase in the inclusionary requirement. How does 15% affect home building, even 20%? How do key changes since 2021 in the home-building environment affect increases in inclusionary units? We request... If restrictions continue to be placed on building housing, we will get less, not more. We request a new study to be done before any changes in the inclusionary ordinance are made.
Thank you. Jesús Silva. Did you need the other mic? Oh, you got it. Jesús Silva, con intérprete.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Me llamo Jesús Silva. Les quiero pedir, por favor, a todos los miembros del consejo.
Good evening. My name is Jesús Silva. I want to ask every member of the council...
Que nos ayuden, por favor, para que haya viviendas, más viviendas de bajos recursos.
To help us, please, so we have more affordable housing?
Para así poder evitar más y más tanta enfermedad mental.
To avoid more mental health?
Porque me he dado cuenta que principalmente nosotros, los que estamos pobres, ha habido familias que trabajan hasta dos turnos para poder sobrevivir.
I've noticed that people with... The people that are poor, they have to work two shifts to survive.
Y por eso les pido, por favor, que si hay manera que haya fondos disponibles para que construyan más viviendas accesibles para nosotros, que nos ayuden, por favor.
So please help us. Help us if there's any funds available to build more affordable housing, to help us, please.
Porque principalmente aquí en esta ciudad de Oceanside, yo quiero mucho esta ciudad de Oceanside.
Especially here in Oceanside. I love the city of Oceanside.
Esta ciudad de Oceanside la conocí en el 1974.
I... This city of Oceanside. I met the city of Oceanside in 1974.
Gracias a Dios, he and I were traveling casi por todo el país.
Thanks to God, I've traveled throughout the country.
Pero todo el tiempo en mi mente estuve aquí el condado de San Diego, principalmente la ciudad de Oceanside.
But always in my mind, I have... I was thinking in San Diego County, especially the city of Oceanside.
Yo soy mexicano, pero este país lo quiero mucho.
I am Mexican, but I love this country a lot.
Pero quiero que, por favor, nos ayuden, porque en realidad no sé qué es lo que voy a pasar más adelante. Y les vuelvo a repetir, si tienen fondos disponibles para construir viviendas para de bajos ingresos, que lo hagan, por favor.
So please help us. I don't know what's going to happen if we don't find affordable housing. So if there's any funds available to build affordable housing, please help us.
Muchas gracias. Es todo.
Gracias a usted.
Thank you.
Barbara Collins, followed by Jimmy Figueroa, followed by David O.
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor Sanchez and the City Council members. I'm Barbara Collins, an Oceanside resident here on behalf of the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club supports robust policies and strategies to build communities that have affordable housing that is accessible for everyone. To preserve the environment and promote equity with affordable housing, the Sierra Club supports increasing the city's inclusionary housing requirement for new construction. The city should adopt the staff recommendation to change the inclusionary housing requirements to 15%. We support active city partnerships with affordable housing organizations to develop more housing that our city's workforce and low- and moderate-income families can afford. We support active partnerships... We support active partnerships also to preserve the existing affordable housing stock in the city from converting into market-rate housing. The city must make an investment in staff, time, and resources to partner with affordable housing organizations that have the expertise to bring these projects to completion. They're complex, but it can be done. We support smart growth and making the Oceanside Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan a top priority in city housing policies. Smart growth includes policies and planning for a mix of housing types and development for all income levels that are close to job centers and services. And our Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan would accommodate the bulk of the city's future housing and employment growth along our major commercial corridors. We also support preserving Oceanside's farmland and open spaces from destructive sprawl development. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jimmy Figueroa.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Jimmy Figueroa. I am a born and raised resident here of Oceanside. Hearing from our residents, I think about my family's history here in the city. My parents came from Mexico, and they got papers the year that I was born. They both worked two jobs. When I was a baby, we can only afford... My family afford... Can only afford to rent from one of my mom's coworkers. We rented a bedroom. Our family afford in their duplex home before we can find an apartment in Center Street, Crown Heights, and then later on in Tri-City. I'm a direct service provider that works specifically with our homeless population here in this region. And what we keep coming across, studies and data, keep showing us that when we have low vacancy rates of rental units, high market rate, and lack of affordable housing, there is an increase in homelessness. Providing affordable housing is a way to prevent homelessness in our community. The Regional Task Force on Homelessness reports month after month that here in our region, there is a higher rate of families becoming homeless for the first time, higher than the amount of families finding housing. That is a crisis here in our community. So I'm just here to support staff's recommendation to increase the inclusionary rate. But, you know, with the families that I get to serve every day in the community, it's working families from our community that are working one or two jobs with children that attend our schools. 15% is not high enough. So I'm here to support the recommendation, but I think that it is a humane decision to make that rate even higher. Thank you.
Thank you. David O., followed by Araceli Rodríguez.
Good evening, Council. My name is David. I lived in Oceanside, born and bred here. I just want to make an important note tonight that there isn't really anything on tonight's agenda about the preservation of the affordable housing. I think that that is also an important thing to bring up. But since we are here to talk about the production of affordable housing, one of the things that I do want to talk about is that the wording that we use in our agendas is really important... In our ordinances or recommendations is really important. To reference to the co-locating part of the agenda tonight, I just want to mention that there could be potential harm by working with religious institutions on any sort of religious bias that might come up due to any sort of the neighborhood fabric that is kind of ambiguous. The second agenda item that I want... Or, yeah, the second agenda item that I want to bring up is about the recommendations for the updated study. I'd like to guess that we approve that before implementing the... Or after implementing the 15%, because I do also agree on that one, as well as adding another item in terms of rather than just exploring the possibility of expanding the buy-right provisions, I propose that we add that part into the actual exploration... Add the exploration, or at least elements of it, into the DRA study so that we can actually commit to some sort of work plan or workflow after the fact of the study coming out. Because again, tonight, we're not talking about any sort of preservation. We are talking about the production of it. But I think a big part to note is that without... With no conversation about the preservation of affordable housing, there is... That's just going to be leading to the gentrification and to the displacement of families that are currently living in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Araceli Rodríguez. Araceli. Sheila Kada. Okay. Followed by Adam. I'll just say her name again. Araceli Rodríguez. She must have left.
Hello. I'm Sheila Kada, and I live in Arrowood. And I've lived all over the United States, and I love Oceanside. It is the best place in the world. And it has wonderful people, wonderful elected officials. And we need to fix some things. And one of them is the housing. You know, I have a lot of family... I have family in Finland. And Finland is known as the happiest country in the world. And the reason why that is is because they have public medical care, and you don't have to worry about being homeless because if something happens, they... You don't have to worry. They find you. They help you get a home. They help you. They lift you up when you need it. So... And they have done studies, and it shows that by making people not being homeless, that it actually saves money. We need to do things. But this is a problem that's throughout the United States, and we pay a lot of taxes. I pay a lot of taxes. Our federal government sends billions and billions of dollars to rich countries such as Israel. I think that money should be used to take care of our people in the United States, our homeless population. And that's what I have to say. Bye.
Thank you very much. Adam.
Hello, Council. Let's go back to 2005. I was 12 years old, riding my bike down to Oceanside Skate Park by the pier. $800 to $1,000 apartments by the beach were a dime a dozen. Oceanside had an image that outsiders didn't like, but locals didn't care because we loved our city, and that image kept Oceanside affordable. Affordable housing was not an issue in Oceanside until Visit Oceanside came around, and the idea was sold to residents that expanding tourism would benefit them by bringing in outside money in tax revenue... For tax revenue and local businesses. Who really benefited from this development? Because I know I didn't. Public employee wages have not kept up with the cost of living, and most jobs created by increased tourism are low-paying service sector jobs that don't pay enough to live in the area. Unless you are a baby boomer that owns a home or a big-money developer you've been left behind, and it seems the city is trying to fix the problem that it created. I think the main thing the city can do to increase housing now is limit short-term rentals because they're taking away units from residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Wendy Bravo Dolan, followed by Lori Feiler. Can I start? Wendy.
Yeah, there it is. My name is Wendy Bravo Dolan, and I'm an advocate for our city's mobile home parks, especially the seniors. So I'm going to speak to that topic briefly, and it's going to be kind of a shotgun of things. I'd like to lead off right off the bat that we need to preserve our Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission unaltered in terms of the mission that it's been fulfilling for the last, I don't know, few decades here in this town. Above and beyond the 16B, it's handled things like 16B Mobile Harm Park Conversion Ordinance, the business and licensing, corporate filings to do business here, et cetera. It is our resort in public hearing. So I don't want to see anything drawing away from that. Want to see preserved existing affordable housing. This is the mobile home parks. It can't be two minutes. I haven't spoken for two... This means I've got another minute? Is that another...
Yes.
What does this mean? Okay. Excuse me. Preserve existing affordable housing, mobile home parks, and senior housing. Rent caps for senior housing. Coordinate VASH voucher criteria for veterans with VA so that more veterans are referred and can qualify. Uphold, and this is very important right now, uphold city, county, state laws as written. Don't substitute staff for the Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission, nor ad hoc committees for what should be done directly in public hearings. Remove the paragraph from the annual mobile home park form allowing management to choose residents' representatives for binding arbitration. That's a breach of law. Don't do it. Take it out.
Thank you very much. Lori.
My name is Lori Feiler. I'm the CEO for the Building Industry Association. We do not have enough housing, and we are losing our sense of community. People are having to work two or three jobs to pay for their rent. They don't get a sense of community. They forget which city they belong to. And we need to improve the supply of housing in order to deal with this crisis. Projects have to pencil out. Investors can invest anywhere, and if a project does not pencil, it will not get built. 40% of the cost of the home is due to the regulatory process, and that is the variable cost that we have to deal with that is available to lower the cost of... To build the... That is the variable cost that is available to lower the cost to build the housing that we need. To increase the inclusionary requirements is contrary to the goal of building more housing. So do not increase the inclusionary, and please do the study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erin Moran. Moran.
Hi. Erin Moran, 1241 Chambor Court. Talk about affordable housing. My father was on the commission years ago. And the time that he was on, he... We did loan programs for rebuilding houses. And he showed... He was on it for many years. Now that he's passed, we really do have a crisis on our hands, and it is getting worse. People are living in cars. They're actually living in motels, trying to do three or four jobs, going from San Diego, coming back. We're actually really in a crisis. And yes, Southmore Hills... You guys were talking about putting affordable housing in Southmore Hills. Well, it's not going to be that affordable because you have to deal with sewer and water and all these other issues. It doesn't fit in Southmore Hills. Southmore Hills is a job place, and it's bringing a workforce for the tourist industry and things. So how do we solve that problem with that? Well, I agree. We need to increase the inclusionary housing. I agree with staff on the 15%. That new apartment complexes are going to come in with 500-plus units if this is coming to the downtown area. I think half of that should go to the low-income housing. Half.
Thank you.
We have a workforce here, and we need apartment complexes to be at least a half. And then...
Thank you.
And get rid of the low... The rental.
Thank you. Richard Newton, followed by Michelle Seer, followed by Diane Nygaard.[1782.96]
Housing is not a right. Someone always has to pay for it. Concrete, drywall, two-by-fours, all costs money. Who pays? Do the laborers who build the houses work for free? Or do the taxpayers work for free by having their money taken from them by the state to pay for this housing for other people? If you advocate for affordable housing, you're advocating for a form of slavery. Because of this, workforce housing is a flawed pyramid.
Order, please.
No one has a right to live somewhere where they can't afford, including Oceanside. If I get a job as a waiter in La Jolla, that doesn't mean they have to get me a house down there. That's ridiculous. Markets are self-correcting. As people move away, prices and demand drop. That's the way things work. Housing is a personal cost. Everyone needs to adjust their personal circumstances, get roommates, downsize, move to a different area. I cannot imagine having such a sense of entitlement and so little self-respect to stand before a public hearing begging for handouts to provide me for housing that somebody else, provide me for costs for my housing that somebody else would have to pay for. Politicians should not tamper with market forces. It never works. We do not want to be known as a low-income welfare city. Markets are picking up. It's becoming a better area. That's called growth. That's a good thing, okay? If people can't afford to live here, they move somewhere else. It's pretty simple. They move out of state. I moved out of an area that I couldn't afford when I came down here 35 years ago. Keep inclusionary housing at the 10% minimum. Join Huntington Beach and fight the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Seer.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez.
Followed by Diane Nygaard. My apologies.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and city council members. My name is Michelle Seer, and I'm an Oceanside resident. Grateful to be here tonight to, since we're considering changes to housing policies, for we've been at a crisis point for some time with a shortage of available housing units and ungodly, unaffordable prices, especially for seniors and veterans. I'm more fortunate than many of my neighbors who are renting in our 55-plus senior community of Costa Serena in District 3, hanging on to prayers that their landlords will not increase the amount of their rents or decide to sell out from under them, which often happens to my friends. As we know, seniors and veterans are the fastest-growing segment of our homeless population. My hope for tonight is that you'll consider raising the inclusionary housing to at least 15% immediately. We have an opportunity to produce a significant amount of affordable housing now. I ask also that you please do all the city can do to support new 100% affordable projects and to aggressively go after matching funding, especially on smart and sustainable corridors. Please limit short-term rentals, which are driving prices higher while providing less housing for our Oceanside residents, and deny the Oceanside transit redevelopment unless at least 25% of the units are set aside for low-income residents. Since this project is on public land, it should be held to a higher standard. Thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you. Diane Nygaard, followed by Beatriz B. Palmer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Counsel, Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. We have not been meeting our housing obligation for the low-income members of our community. The numbers speak for themselves. We build a whole lot of high-priced housing and not enough for everyone else. We urge you tonight to approve an immediate increase of affordable housing to 15%, to keep the threshold at three units, and to increase the time period it applies from the current 55 years to 99 years. You've already spent our taxpayer dollars on a study that supports that. You don't need to waste more of our money and cause further delay by requiring yet another study. Even if it would support 20%, would HCD even approve it? We've been giving lip service to smart growth for years. Having transportation choices is good policy for everyone, but especially for those folks who have no car or only one car per household. Our cap adopted in 2019 assumes 50% of growth would be in smart growth corridors, but is it? Please, ask staff for that information so you can make good policy. You also need to take more action to protect the affordable housing we already have. At your last meeting, you considered the Tremont Street project that will displace low-income residents. You took a good step forward by requiring the housing agreement to consider options for city subsidy to increase the size or number of units, but that does not address displacement. Our mobile home parks are key part of our low-income housing. They've been asking for years for help to protect those units. It does not seem like anybody is listening. Please, move us forward. Approve 15% tonight and direct staff to come back with more options to protect our existing affordable housing while you work to build more. Tonight is the time for action. Thank you.
Thank you. Beatriz, Beatriz B. Palmer, followed by Joan Bachmann, followed by Adolfo Antonio Cruz.
Buenas noches. Good evening. I'm Beatriz Palmer, daughter of Graciela Mora, Modesto Mora, and granddaughter of Antonia Salazar. I've been a resident here for 49 years, just a little bit over 49, and my parents had a dream that I would one day be a homeowner. And we did that through higher education, through community engagement, and through hard work. And I have a dream that my kids will one day own their home. But unfortunately, the prices of homes, their dreams aren't coming true. One of my sons moved out of state. My daughter lived with us for a year, and she still couldn't afford to purchase a home with a damn good education, both she and her husband. So now they had to move out of Oceanside. And I ask you to please reconsider changing the in-lu fees. Do an immediate change to 15%. As a former member of the City of Oceanside Housing Commission, we begged and pleaded as a commission for you all to change that to no avail. We did have a small change, but we're asking you now to reconsider. The common thread that you've heard tonight, I'm not going to repeat it, but there's two powerful words that I want you to think about as you lay your heads down in your nice, privileged homes like I have. Dignidad, dignity. They're begging you for places that are affordable for them and their children so they can avoid mental health of having to work multiple jobs to house and feed basic human rights. You've heard of these gentlemen talking about privilege, right, to move out, but some of them don't have even the privilege of leaving. They have their legacies here, and they love this country and they love this community. Now is the time for you to create that change. Commit to 15% with a plan to increase that with due time. Listen to the people. You made a commitment to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Bachmann, followed by Adolfo Antonio Cruz, followed by Madeline.
Good evening, Counsel. Joan Bachmann. As you know, I raised three children here. I'm also a rental owner, and I'm pretty sure 20% of my units are affordable. And I think up till recently, it was probably more like 40%. I keep long-term tenants. They stay 12, 15 years. So what I want you to do is find the empty homes. The real estate industry has messed up housing. Many of them are not even in the housing market. They, we have these short-term rentals, 492 in the coastal zone. Let's return those to housing. Investment homes, these high-priced condos. If I pay millions of dollars for a condo, the last thing I want is someone living in it. I'm going to flip it. I'm going to turn it around. And then on my street, there are three ghost homes. I brought this up repeatedly. Three homes owned by people who live in other states. No one's in them. That's just my street. I have, my street is pretty short. So in this town, we have a lot of people making investments, and they need to stop that. We've got to support the smart and sustainable corridor plan. That is our answer. We can meet every single need if we do that. We have over 60 sites on that plan, so we've got to do that. But in order to make that work, especially on Coast Highway, we've got to have a skyline ordinance. You can't just put a wall of six stories or four stories, which is the current zoning, on there now. You've got to create separate retail and areas so that they have, so there's a there there, okay? You can't just put retail from one end to the other. So we've got to learn these things. We've got to do that. The skyline and the nodes and avenues are not adequate in the SSCP at this point, but everything else is, and you need to do that. So please, find the ghost homes, get rid of the investment properties, and return those short-term rentals to the neighborhood. I don't even want to talk to people walking down my street because they don't live there. I spend my time, I'm, you know me, I'm telling them about things. I'm helping them get into the community.
Thank you.
And it's a waste of my time. So please, put it back.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have Adolfo Antonio Cruz. Do we have two people speaking?
Just, um, we first.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, please. Estimados miembros del Consejo Municipal y respetados la comunidad de Oceanside.
Dear city council members and respected Oceanside community.
Mi nombre es Adolfo Antonio Cruz, y me presento ante ustedes como un residente y padre de familia.
My name is Adolfo Cruz. I introduce myself to you as a resident and a parent.
Una familia humilde trabajadora que ha vivido en Oceanside durante seis años.
We are a humble and hard-working family that has lived in Oceanside for over six years.
Nuestros hijos asisten a las escuelas Pirata, Jefferson, Middle School, y Mission Elementary.
Our children attend Pirates, Jefferson, Middle School, and Mission Elementary.
Vinimos a los Estados Unidos buscando una oportunidad mejor.
We came to the United States out of necessity looking for better opportunities.
Como personas humildes y trabajadoras.
As humble and hard-working people.
Porque nuestros países son atropelladas nuestros derechos por los gobiernos.
Because in our countries, they violate our rights through the government.
Hoy les hablo porque nuestra situación habitacional nos está afectando.
Today, I'm here because our housing is affecting us deeply.
Los alquileres no paran de subir y nuestros derechos como inquilinos son, son constantemente atropellados.
Rents keep increasing, and our rights as tenants are constantly being violated.
Cuando nos damos cuenta estamos atrapados en una situación de la que no podemos salir, nos dicen que les debemos, pero la verdad, la verdadera deuda aquí está. Falta de vivienda accesible y es una deuda que la ciudad tiene con nosotros.
By the time we realize it, we are trapped in a situation we can't get out of. They tell us we owe them, but the real debt here is the lack of affordable housing, and it's a debt they owe, the city owes us.
Sería bueno adoptar un modelo como está trabajando la ciudad de San Marcos con inversionistas privadas.
It would be appropriate to adopt a model like the City of San Marcos with a private industry.
Una solución que sugerimos son viviendas 100% accesibles. No aceptamos medidas parciales. Necesitamos proyectos de vivienda completamente accesibles.
Some solutions I suggest are 100% affordable housing. We will not accept partial measures. We need fully affordable housing projects.
Protección para inquilinos, controles de alquiler y medidas de protección para inquilinos.
Tenant protections, rent controls, and tenant protections measures.
No son negociables.
They are non-negotiable. They are a necessity.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Zid Brown? Is there a Madeline? Okay, Max Disposti, oh, yep, she's come. Madeline, is that Brownsey or Brown?
It's Brownsey.
Brownsey?
Yeah. So I wanted to come because our neighbor, who has a little boy, my son's age, was illegally evicted from her home, and they opened it up to, I'm sweating from chasing him all day, for a illegal short-term rental, and nothing happened. I called the police, made a report, and they just said, well, we gave him a warning. And you give a lot more than a warning to, like, homeless people and people who have a lot less than he does. And it is now. Yeah. And to rent out that house, it is now $4,700. I can't, I'm not low-income. I can't afford that. So you're not going to have a middle class soon if we don't make it affordable for us to live here. Because she was illegally evicted, and there's nothing to do about it. And she was like his best friend. So I hope that you guys take that into account, that there is our people who are losing their homes to short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Max Disposti, followed by Amber Kay Niuatoa.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Max Disposti am also the chair of the Community Relation Commission. Well, the conversations tonight is not new. We have been talking about the 15%, the 20%. The realistic dynamics here is that for the past 20 years, the leadership, or 30, actually, the leadership of this council has fought against any affordability, any of it. We had went 10% because the state of California has imposed 10% on the City of Oceanside, not because this council has a vote, has ever voted for it. So I think the 15% has been a mediation because 20 sometimes, the majority of this council doesn't even want to do it or change anything, so 15% is okay. But the reality, the statistics and research show that 20% will perhaps start to begin to make an effect on affordability. That's the number one. The second thing is that we reduce control of the short-term leasing, as the previous speaker has spoke about it. Land acquisitions, 100% affordability, it looks like Mission Cove today. It would be amazing to have a city that really engage in innovative acquisition. And then about the North County Transit Center, folks, it's a slap on the face of people that are poor in this community to have tall brothers going around and asking for the color or the scheme of this building where we're struggling to survive in this community. It's a slap on the place. It looks, in the face, it looks like the council has given up to provide any limitation to that project. So I invite you to rethink about that. And thoroughly, the last speaker, few speakers ago, they was talking about, we don't have a right to be here. This is actually the main conversation that's been going on in this council for many years. The right that people don't deserve to be here is something that's pushed people out for years. It's a war against, and criminalization against poverty in this city, and we need to stop by building more affordability and services. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we're near the end here. We have Amber Kay Niuatoa, and then Alyssa Wu.
I'm not going to repeat everything you've heard here tonight because it has been very repetitive. So as members of the council, I hope you're really listening to the citizens of the City of Oceanside. We've had two outliers and two lobbyists here tonight who have been in opposition to raising this, so I hope that the vote is unanimous tonight in raising to a minimum of 15% with a plan to increase like yesterday. And with the transportation issue, a building issue, 25% is, you know, a good start, but we have the chance to also set precedent and make that number as high as we would like it to be to support the members of this community that have built this community. Many of the jobs we brought in for tourism do not supply jobs that actually make it affordable. And as a graduate degree-holding person, I could not afford to buy my home last year when I was able to get the inside before going into a competitive buying market. I went to high school here. I went to Lincoln Middle School. I went to Dittmar. I graduated from Maricopa College. This is my home. I will fight to stay here, and if you don't make it possible, we will make you leave. Thank you.
Last person, Alyssa Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and council members for having us tonight. I want to take a minute. I know we're talking about housing, but I want to pause. The focus on what a steady home actually affects. Right? As a pediatric medical professional, I see an impact a steady home has on a family's health. Negative socioeconomic factors are directly correlated with poor health, and this is shown over and over again. As a member of the Justice Works Committee here in Oceanside Sanctuary, I've had the privilege of watching my courageous neighbors talk personally about the impact the housing crisis has had on them. And I'm going to echo a lot of things that have already been said tonight. Again, we must increase the inclusionary housing to at least 15%. It's the least that we can do to at least try to drop a bucket in the crisis that has been created. I'm in favor of 100% affordable housing while going after matching funding aggressively. And I also find it important to decrease short-term rentals to ensure housing in Oceanside goes specifically to its residents. Lastly, the Oceanside transit redevelopment should be required to have at least 25% of its units set aside for low-income residents. When you're voting on these measures, I want you to take into account all the things that a steady home can create for a family.
Thank you very much. All right. So staff has asked us to... So staff has asked us to go to vote for each policy one at a time. Do you have something that you could put up on the screen? So we know that we, what we are looking at. And then perhaps we can address our comments one at a time.
Are you not going to open it up to any other commenters almost before you vote?
We just finished the public input. That's it. So now it's for the council. We're going to discuss this. But I got an early heads up that staff is requesting that we vote on these one at a time, these policies, this direction to staff. So I'm asking staff, if you can put on the screen each of the policies' directions you are requesting that we take. Do you need a minute?
Yeah.
Do you need a minute?
Take a quick break.
Okay, let me take a five-minute break. My apologies. We're back on. And apparently two people, Rachel Hernandez and Thomas LaCroix, accidentally signed up for this and accidentally wrote it on a different item. So I'm going to call you guys onto, at the podium, please, if you could get your comments in so that we can get started with council discussion, council action. And we'll go ahead and start with you, Ms. Hernandez, Rachel Hernandez.
Okay, Fernandez, yes, thanks.
Fernandez, thank you.
I'm a resident of Crown, hi. I'm a resident of Crown Heights for the last about six years. I recently had to move because the property owners are selling our house. And so we were pushed out. And I was lamenting that I didn't think I'd be able to find anywhere in the neighborhood that I could afford to live. I happen to have two friends who had to move, so I took over their lease. And I'm saying to all my friends that I think I found the last affordable apartment in the neighborhood or Oceanside, right? So it happens to be because this landlord is willing to charge below market rate. So one of the things I wanted to speak to is, a few people have talked about this with not just, we need to build more housing, but we're also trying to increase affordable housing, right? So that doesn't mean to be just building. It also be incentive for landlords that want to do that. Maybe they can get a big tax break if they are willing to charge a lower rate. Secondly, I wanted to talk about something that I haven't heard anyone mention, which is that housing is a publicly traded commodity on Wall Street. So we're not competing, people wanting to buy housing aren't competing with each other. They're competing with hedge funds. So I want to know what's going to be done to try to limit the amount that one entity can own in the city, because I know you guys all know about the game Monopoly, right? You own enough and you can help set the prices, right? And that brings me to the third thing, which is another way to bring in revenue for affordable housing, is a vacancy tax. I think a few people talked about these sort of ghost homes, what have you. It's the same thing with the short-term rentals, right, with the A R B and Bs and whatnot. You restrict that. You say you have to live on the property at least half a year if you want to rent out your house, okay? Stronger regulations there. But also, you can't just sit on an apartment for like a year and try, like there's an apartment over by the railroad tracks in South Oceanside. It's a three-bedroom, and he's trying to charge $6,000 a month for a three-bedroom by the railroad track. There's got to be some way that we can rein in the greed of people like that and create more revenue for the city for affordable.
Thank you very much. Thomas LaCroix.
My name is Thomas LaCroix. I was born here. And I really care a lot about Oceanside. And I hear a lot of people say, talk about those inclusionary numbers. And I think they're very important, right? So I think, so what it sounds like is it's being voted on to be 15 or maybe 20% inclusionary. And that's really important to keep it, to keep it affordable. But I just want to talk about total numbers. Like, we have to do more than just inclusionary. We have to, we do, like, I heard people talk about, we have an open market. And like libertarianism, you don't belong here, whatever. I don't believe in that. And, but I do take issue with the assertion that we have an open market. We do not have an open market. We are only allowed to build single-family houses, for the most part. 60% and above of our residential land is zoned only for one unit of housing. My mailman can't afford to live in the city, or like in the neighborhood he delivers mail to. So anyways, that is a digression. But we should definitely increase inclusionary numbers to keep it affordable. Do the study, approve it, and yeah, just do it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. So on to the discussion by council. And we'll go ahead and begin, we'll go ahead and do this one strategy at a time. This is for consideration and for vote. So we begin with. Okay, here we go.
Since I got to rearrange the slides, I thought I'd start with the one that I think provides the greatest action. And that is on the NOFA. And being able to partner with affordable housing developers to do that 100% affordable rental housing. So this recommendation is to allow for the issuance of a NOFA up to a minimum of $6 million. We're using this very specific funding sources of home, PLHA, and inclusionary housing to target our near homeless population, our homeless population, specifically seniors or veterans. Those funding sources work very well together in that that is specific, that is the specific target for home and for PLHA.
Right. Okay, so the first one is the NOFA issuing a notice of funding with this at least $6 million. And we've got Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Councilmember Joyce.
I just had some questions. He can, you can do seconds, fine.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And now Councilmember Joyce, because the lights disappeared except for yours.
Sorry. This references, in the proposed action here, it references a sizable production of units. Is there like a range you're thinking? I know this is a little, you know, predictatory, but maybe we could try.
Sure. So when I mean sizable, I think that $6 million will probably get you anywhere between 60 units, maybe 100 units. Just depends on how many other sources of funds we can get into the pie. You know, if the county wants to pony up some money or other sources, then it may be a larger project than that. But typically, you hear around the $5 million mark is about a 60 to 100 unit project.
Okay. And so if we were to find a way to like partner some of these together, so let's say we found a redeveloped city-owned property, that would bring the cost down. That would, we'd be contributing more to that project too. So possibly we'd get more units out of something like that.
Exactly. The more funds you have together, either the deeper the affordability targeting, or the more units you could produce.
And the targeting of our veteran and senior populations for this particularly, is that, obviously, they're high-needs populations. And there are many, but is there a reason that we're particularly choosing those? Is it a funding issue too?
We do have the availability of the 30 HUD-VAS vouchers. We need, we are hearing in terms of the VA that it's very difficult to refer folks with HUD-VAS vouchers in Oceanside because of the high rents here. And so by project basing the HUD-VAS vouchers, we'd be able to utilize better our HUD-VAS. So that's particularly for veterans. There are a lot of other opportunities for leveraging on the veteran's side. The seniors is a population group. I think that we have all heard from the RTFH and when we talk about homelessness, that that is a growing need. And I will say that in our Housing Choice Voucher Program, seniors comprise about 65% of our Housing Choice Voucher participants. So they are a large part of that population. Anecdotally, in our office, every day, we get folks calling that are seniors that maybe have lost a spouse or another person, are facing homelessness for the first time. And so that's why we've chosen that targeted population group. The only very specific requirements of the funding sources that we're throwing out there is that they need to be at that extremely low or very low-income population. But seniors and veterans, that's not a requirement of any of those funding sources.
Okay. What I want to, what I really want to be sure we do is that if we're going to do an opportunity like this, that we take it as far as we possibly can so that we don't miss an opportunity to add units. This was not in the proposal, but I just ask what council, my council members and the mayor might think about setting aside transit occupancy tax or new hotel tax funding over the next year to go to this project to add funding source? Is there any reason to or not to do that?
What about saying at least the $6 million up to the $10 million? That's how much we have, is $10 million?
Of that funding source?
Yeah, the total fund is $10 million. So the request from staff is to say $6 million, at least $6 million.
And this would come back to us again, right? So if we had a, what I don't want to miss is if we have an opportunity to do a $12 million project and add 300 units because we have enough space to do it, I don't want to do a smaller project on a space that we could add more units. I don't want to miss that opportunity. So all I'm saying is I think we should be flexible when we move forward.
Okay, yes. And you, and again, this evening is not necessarily about a final vote. So we will bring back the NOFA back to council, and we can revisit this. This is something that we can also discuss with the affordable housing community in terms of what they think or some of the options and leveraging opportunities so that we make sure that we don't miss the vote.
Okay, I'll support the motion then.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be really clear for everybody. So the pool of money, this $10 million, that's all from in-lu fees?
The $10 million is the balance of our in-lu fees. But we do have, the home ARP, for example, is 2.2 million. We'd use that. We've got about $2 million for the PLHA. We're throwing out those dollars because those do have some time requirements associated with them.
I guess my point is that I've heard a lot about, well, we don't want builders to pay in-lu fees. We want them to do them on-site. And I think a lot of developers are starting to do that. There's a quote in this DRA report that talks about, if the in-lu fee is less than the gap cost to build affordable units on-site, the developer will have the incentive to pay the in-lu fee. So it's a, it's a nice little bit they put in there. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that if developers decide to do their on-site development, this is a limited pool of tank of money that we're going to have. And I'm fine with spending it all. I hope nobody out there thinks that we're against affordable housing 100% when we can build it and do it. But there will come a time, probably, when that pool will be empty.
Absolutely. It's an in-lu fee, in lieu of providing it.
Right. And one would hope that they would build on-site. It'd be faster. But anyway, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. There it goes.
Okay, next request for, next recommendation from staff.
So we're going to go to another easy one on land availability. This is just more of promoting the availability of sites, conducting that inventory of our surplus lands, making sure that those lands are suitable for development, reporting back out. If there is land that is available, I think the next action or next discussion will be is putting that surplus land out.
Right. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. I'll second that, but I do have a question. When we talk about available lands, are we just talking about vacant land?
No, not necessarily. Underutilized land as well.
We're talking about all, where we.
Underutilized.
Where we may have occupants in city-owned buildings, things like that, right?
It could be if there's a desire to do that. I think that we, we won't know until we do the study.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Joyce.
I would support it, just kind of what you're alluding to. I think we should be reviewing all city-owned land. And that's no matter what's on it right now. If it's underutilized and it's a space that could provide that affordable housing boost, then we should look at it.
That's item number two, conduct inventory of all city-owned land. All right, there's a motion and a second, and no other requests to speak. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
These are all the easy ones. Next recommendation from staff. No, oh, okay. Went blank for a while. It was like, oh, no.
So this is related to the by-right approval. As we discussed, staff and the council has already supported the by-right or ministerial review on affordable housing sites that have been identified already in the housing element. This is looking to expand it beyond those sites.
So I had asked, why isn't it 100% by-right? And I understand that at least 20% of the units is state law. So, but the idea is that we really want to push as many affordable housing units as possible. Right? And this would be along transportation corridors. It would not be within neighborhoods, correct?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, that is the intent. And certainly, when we come back with the recommendation, our goal is to concentrate housing where it'll have the least impact on existing neighborhoods, which generally be along the corridor. Certainly not our intent to introduce by-right multifamily housing in some of our single-family areas.
Thank you very much. Deputy Merrickheim?
I just wanted to reiterate that. It's very important to me. I've been told we can make arena numbers without having to change the zoning in our neighborhoods. And I want to keep that the case. I do not want a ministerial approval of multifamily or change. I want us to stay with what the neighborhoods were intended to be.
So was that a motion?
No.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Question I had was on this, the state, they are, I don't know if it's in place or they're proposing, but the by-right or ministerial approvals, they have things in place for underutilized properties where they're going, they could, or they're going to allow developers to come in and build by-right without city approval. Is that correct?
Councilmember Robinson, yes, there is a state program in law that requires, as an example, state-owned land, there's a piece of property that Caltrans owned that was marketed to the development community for a by-right approval of a housing development.
Okay, so it's, yeah, we're not doing anything unusual here or anything that the state's not doing.
That's correct.
Okay, I'll move recommendation.
There's a motion. Councilmember Joyce?
So for this one, I think the details really do matter here. I think we could, we should probably do this at 25%. And what, I think the details of the waivers really matter. Which waivers, or where we're leaving them from. I do, I agree that getting through the process faster is really good. But the exploration of this, I think, should bring back a couple of different options, including 25%. And then also what the waivers are really targeting.
So my understanding is that state law says 20%. So that's why it says 20%.
That would be 20% on identified low-income sites in the inventory. I don't think that that would exclude you from doing it on other sites.
Okay. Councilmember Weiss?
I'd like to expand the ministerial review to include any density bonus projects that do not require any waivers or concessions. And I think right now, out of all of the density bonus projects, all of them require some form of waiver or concession. So as an incentive, if they don't require waivers or concessions, if they underground utilities or they do parking and setbacks in height, then they could get expedited in ministerial approval.
I'd have a difficult time supporting that. I think what we're looking for is ensuring that we, like, fast-track development that is doing a higher part of affordable housing units. I was actually looking more towards the 100%. I'm understanding that the state law says, well, no, it's got to be at least 20%. I'm understanding that the state law says, well, no, it's got to be at least 20%. So I'd like to stick to what the motion is. Councilmember Robinson?
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Councilmember Weiss, can you just run that through me a little bit more, because then I might modify my motion.
So if you're doing 20%, the state says you get an expedited ministerial approval. For density bonus projects that do not require any waiver or concession, they would also get the same expedited treatment.
You see, I think our, our public would have a hard time with that.
If I could provide some clarification, those state provisions really only apply to commercial zones and zones that allow mixed-use developments. So to Councilmember Keim's point, they would not be allowed in a single-family neighborhood, as an example, those types of ministerial approvals.
Thank you. So, so we have the original motion that hasn't been, there was no second to that amended. So Councilmember Joyce? Did you not want to speak again? We have a motion in a second. Let's vote. Next recommendation?
This actually is not necessarily a recommendation. I think that this is just something that we think is prudent action, is just to ensure that we're always keeping up with state density bonus law, the various amendments that may come up, and then as needed, amending the inclusionary housing to make sure that they are somewhat considered.
So is this something that we need to vote on, then? Is staff requesting? No?
Mayor and council, I don't think you need to vote on this necessarily. We do routine-
That's what you do.
There are multiple density bonus amendments, bills that come through annually, and the Planning Division brings forward conforming amendments to our code annually. So it's just something we're going to have to continue to monitor because there are multiple bills pending right now.
Right, so we, we are, we actually rely on staff doing that, right? So we're not going to vote on this next one? Yes.
Just before we move on, the, for everyone who's, who's watching the density bonus and, and the affordable housing arena, we are looking at adding a possible another layer to density bonus in the downtown area. So that, that is something to keep an eye on.
That's, and that should be coming to us in the fall, which we're already there, almost, right? That was in the staff report. All right, this one is increasing the set aside for affordable housing from 10% to 15%, which is, staff is recommending that we also do a study and increase the threshold from three units to 10 units. Councilmember Joyce?
So this one is, focus number one, sorry, let me make sure I have my notes. So is the recommendation to go ahead and do 10% to 15% and then also do a study? Is that the recommendation? Those are two separate actions? Just want to make sure I'm clear about the recommendation.
It's one vote though, right? Depending on whatever the motion is.
Just asking for the recommendation itself.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, yes, our, our recommendation essentially was to include both actions as part of council's vote. I mean, in theory, you could separate them if you didn't want to do one or the other, but the recommendation by staff is to do both.
And I think it goes without saying, but for the benefit of the public, we can't raise the requirement from 10% to 15% tonight. We'd have to draft amendments and bring that forward. So one thing you could do is, pending the amendment, you could have staff do the study so they could be presented together for introduction and adoption.
But they won't, it won't slow down the process, correct?
Well, that would be very simple, but I'll have to defer to the manager about how long.
It most likely would slow down the process.
So I'd like to make a motion that we enact, we raise it from 10% to 15% at the next council meeting, September 13th. It's something that staff could have ready by then. We also do the study. I think the study is important because staff identified a possible issues with our production of smaller units, so raising up the threshold from three to 10. I think we should study that and understand it better if that is, we, we hear a lot about huge projects coming in and having rapid change. If we want smaller projects, then we should understand what we need to do to get smaller projects. So I, I support that as part of the study. I'd also like the study to, to give us an, an understanding of whether or not 20%, 25%, 30%, what is, what percentage is, where do we get to a point where it is going to be in violation of what HCD would say is precluding development in, in our city? So I'd like the study to include that, and also to include the fact that density bonus is our reality that we're living in right now. So it should also include the, what density bonus is doing, and that should be an active variable within that study.
Mayor, if I could, as, I understand the desire to go quickly, and I think we can go quickly, but this is a local coastal plan amendment, and would have to go to the Planning Commission. And I think staff would also perhaps have to take it to the Housing Commission. I'm not sure if that part's mandatory, but the Planning Commission would be mandatory for the LCP amendment.
Okay, so it could be done concurrently, the study, because the staff report said you don't have to do the study, except for if it's above 15%?
Correct.
So could we do the 15% at the earliest possible-
Yes.
-date?
Yes.
Okay. And then the study whenever DRA can get it done?
The study can be concurrently done, worked on.
Well, it's going to take longer, is what it sounds like. It sounds like that will take months, and this one could be done when the planning meets, and then we meet after, I would assume.
I mean, ultimately, it's up to the discretion of the council when you want it to come back, but we would have to go to the Planning Commission, is what, my point.
So I would ask that they both be done as quickly as possible. That's my motion.
There we go. Staff, we're saying, right? Councilmember Robinson?
And I, I just want to comment, any projects that are currently in the pipeline, they would come under the 10% anyways, right? There's, for staff, nothing's going to change for those that are already in the system. This would only impact projects that come up after adoption, so.
If, if that's your direction, projects that are SB 330 projects are already protected, invested. So the SB 330 application is the, most projects are taking advantage of that where they file and they vest under the existing rules, provided they file a formal application within 180 days. So it would make sense to do that.
So if it was outside of SB 330, then, then they can apply, it can apply?
It's subject to your discretion.
That would be good. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. I, I'm okay with supporting the increase from 10% to 15%, but I'd like to see that the allowable density bonus for very low-income projects go to 75%, low-income to 50%, and moderate to 25%. To bump from 10% to 15%, so we're seeing with the Greenbrier project, the cost to build is almost $500,000. The sales price for a low-income home for a family of three is only $200,000. So someone's got to make up that gap, and the way you make it up is add units. So I think if we're going to go from 10% to 15%, we need to give the ability to add units. And so those numbers are slightly above what is currently provided for in our 10% set of sites. So if we go to 15%, I'd like to see those density bonus numbers go up, and I'd be supportive of the motion then.
Can you say that again? So you want more units above and beyond what, what the density bonus law allows?
Yes. So they have the opportunity to go for very low, instead of 50%, go to 75 for low, to go from 30 to 50, and for moderate, to go to 25%.
Moderate only applies to when you buy a house.
Correct.
So I, I don't know if I can support that because it's really going to depend on where it is and the impacts and all of that. I mean-
If we go from 10% to 15%, someone has to pay for the gap. So adding units will do that.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
I think this is, I'm very concerned. I think there is, I'm happy to go to 20% in some areas, but this is, I think we're falling in the same, making the same mistakes by doing this blanket increase across the city that the state did across the entire state. When you have one state senator from San Francisco who makes housing legislation and passes bills like SB 9 and 10 that impact every neighborhood, there's some places where, and this is what's going to happen, I think the mayor and I actually disagree on this one. We, if we do a 15%, it's going to, we have a project coming up on Avocado Street, it's going to, they're going to force, to make that, they're going to force to increase density in the single-family neighborhoods, which is what they're doing. And these are bad projects where you get one or two affordable units, you impact, and then they get unlimited waivers as well. When we go to, I mean, are, are we seeing, do we have, staff, I know it's a little subjective, but projects, do you feel like they're always successful projects when you do these one-offs and have to manage one or two affordable units in a single-family neighborhood? Is that, is that a successful way for the city? I know it's just outside of our purview because it's density bonus, but I mean, for us, we're trying to make policy that's really effective for our city. And for me, I'd like bigger projects in the corridors that you manage, a bigger chunk of affordable that we're better at, instead of one in Fire Mountain on Avocado, one on Ivy Street, and two on Bellicalina with that. So those are, and that's why I do, when we do 15% across the board, it's going to cause all these ripple effects, just like we're seeing the state do, and I am not going to be the one to watch the state make these mistakes, and come in and do it on a smaller scale here. That's why I think this is way too nuanced to be making this tonight, and-
Plus the HCD, whatever, is going to have to look at this, right? Above 15%. But not at 15%. So-
May I finish this?
Yep.
So that's the challenge. I think in smart and sustainable corridors, when we're doing what Councilmember Weiss says, where you have a corridor, you can do a 20% and give the density bonus and have a good project and manage it, but I don't want that same 15% shoved in a single-family neighborhood where we're not going to manage a successful project. So that's why, this is part of our general plan update, it's a smart and sustainable corridors, has nothing to do, I just want to make sure any projects we get are successful and they fit the city. We can make, and that's what, when the state, when the state is making these, the state's making these laws, we can, we can get all arena numbers and our affordable numbers outside, without changing the zoning in single-family, we can keep them on corridors, what they're supposed to be. But again, when you do a blanket, I can't support a blanket 15. I'll support 20 in some places. When we have a density bonus law, and what density bonus, for those that don't understand, is a developer can come in and do a certain amount of affordable, and they get unlimited design waiver and waivers. So they don't have to underground, they don't have to have setbacks, they don't have to take advantage for, for a minor amount. Someone much smarter than me told me, we don't get, for what we give up, we don't get enough in return for those. So again, I, I just think that it's too, this is too nuanced to do one thing that just says 15% across the board, because that's going to, that's going to make an impact on all of these different single-family neighborhoods. And again, this goes, and this is also, housing production, all we're doing is, is doing the inclusionary fees tonight, but there's been big points tonight. When you want to maintain the character of a single-family neighborhood, that includes STRs. I don't think we should have STRs outside, outside the coastal zone in single-family neighborhoods.
All right, so I'm, so I'm going to go ahead and second the motion, because I just actually, Councilmember Joyce made that, made that motion initially. My apologies, I thought you were done.
I was in the middle of talking.
Oh. Well, Councilmember Joyce made, made a motion to do increase from 10% to 15%, and then he, there was discussion regarding the economic study, and, right?
I just support a robust economic study. That's all it is. 10% to 15% and a very robust economic study that includes density bonus, I would love it to include-
Yeah, that was your motion.
Councilmember Weiss's-
So I'm seconding your motion. Okay, so your light was on to, my apologies, Councilmember Joyce?
I was just going to say, the single-family neighborhood, that piece, that's, that's why we're doing the study, to look at how we can do, how we can impact the smaller developments, to make sure that they're not-
But we're going, we're going immediately, we're trying to rush to get 15% across the board.
I asked for this many months ago. If there was studying that needed to be done, we should have done it by now. This is the workshop, this is what we're here for.
Tony, that is, that is bad policy. The state's made it, we complain about that, and we're going to make it ourselves. I'm just telling you, my opinion is bad policy to make.
The state has lots of rules that we complain about all the time, and most of the time we're complaining because there's things that we can't do. This is the one thing that we can do to make sure new housing includes affordable housing.
But we can do it right. Eric, I think, Councilmember Joyce, sir.
Hold on. So, so I don't think that, that, number one, we're talking about changing the threshold from three units to 10 units. So it's, it's not even going to apply until it gets to 10 units. And I mean, you can't do from three units, you really can't, what's 10%? It's like, it doesn't qualify. It has to be 50% or more in order to get to that extra unit. So this three to 10 units, it's almost de minimis, right? Councilmember Robinson?
I'm not sure that that's exactly what the motion would do, but I'll leave it to others to figure that out. But I do want to ask, Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Keim, excuse me. I hear what you said. Now, if we were going to do something to advise staff or make a motion, what would you, how would you do that? How could we do that tonight?
Deputy Mayor, so you're done with, with your comments?
Well, not maybe.
Your comments, and then, and then I can have him speak.
And this is-
Hold on, hold on.
This is, this is complex policy.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
This is what we're supposed to be doing?
Hold on, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, as, you know, as we're listening to this discussion, you know, I understand the concerns that are being expressed on both sides of this issue here. It's my understanding that there are some cities that actually bifurcate their inclusionary requirements and set a lower threshold on single-family and a higher threshold on multifamily, and if, if agreeable by the council, that's something that we can explore when we bring this back, given the concerns that have been raised about protecting single-family neighborhoods.
Okay. So will that work?
Can I-
This is a workshop, okay, guys?
I'm ready.
Did you mean to have your light on?
Yes.
Again?
I was trying, I've been, I've been trying to answer the question that Councilmember Robinson raised.
Right, well, you keep turning your light off. Turn your, I guess you're, Ryan, speak.
Okay. So I, there's certain places I want the density higher than 15% density, or the affordable, and there's certain places I don't. And that's why it needs, I, up on the, on the council on the dais right now, but if we look into that, and to make that successful for projects to pencil out, we have to do what Councilmember Weiss says, and add a bigger density bonus, but I, it's very important on where we put those. I don't want unnecessary density in the wrong spots. We can make it successful for projects pencil, and we can protect our single-family neighborhoods and protect the character of our zoning right now. And we can continue that on a different day, also with STRs and things. This is a big issue with lots of different angles, but I, I'm just, I'm not going to support a blanket one raise to 15% at the next meeting tonight. If staff wants to bring back, so, I'm not going to support that. If staff wants to bring back options about where we can increase it successfully and where we can make sure we, we keep it the same, then I'm, I'm open to-
So you're speaking against the 15%?
A universal 15%. Yes, I'm not going to support universal 15%.
Councilmember Joyce?
At some point, we do have to have a base. So I, I love nuance. Hey, we're in a workshop, let's get some nuance going. We need to do another one next week. I think we need to do another workshop. You guys, see you next week? Okay, so the whole deal is, we got to have a base, and we can go to 15%. The state has set that, that they're not even going to review it at 15%. For every little, every little knob we turn, yes, there is a down, a downhill effect, but this knob will have a downhill effect of including more affordable housing, and we can set the base at 15, and then I will get as funky and as nuanced as you want to get on our inclusionary housing ordinance after that. But this has to happen as soon as possible because we're just kicking the can on the road every time we delay.
May I ask a clarification? Did the motion include Councilmember Weiss's request for a beefier density bonus?
I, I said I would love to include that in the study, so that we would know if that's the penciling that we need to see.
Okay.
Councilmember Weiss, speaking of-
How long do you think it'll take to update that old study, which is only a year old?
My goal would be to have it completed in three months.
To bring an ordinance back to go from 10% to 15%?
Planning Commission, council, maybe housing- Planning Commission, council, maybe Housing Commission, we'd have to confer.
So probably three months.
I don't think it takes that long, but it...
Does it take that long? You could do it within a month.
Within 60 days.
It's a public hearing, so the noticing alone for each of those is gonna be a month.
I did confirm while I was waiting here, we did go to the Coastal Commission on the last amendment to 14C. So...
So conceivably, they could come at the same time?
Conceivably, yes, but I do, again, would say that the study is gonna probably be the, the critical path item to get that done. And obviously, we need to make some calls to get some consulting consultants working on this as soon as possible, recognizing the urgency here. I, I will say this, the more we add to this study, the more it's gonna slow it down, so...
I know.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robinson.
See, I told you I have another question.
Yeah, I just wanted you to put your light on again, just so that I can see who to call on next.
Okay, okay. My concern on this one, that's fine. My concern is that if we do the 15 and, keeping in mind what the deputy mayor talked about, about varying, there may be places where 10 is, is correct. And what you're saying, I think, is, well, 15's our base, so that's gonna take 10 off the table. Is that what you're saying?
If we agree that there's a place where 10% should be the case, then we can go from there. My, my problem is that if we continue to do this, we're leaving units on the table. These things take time. We, this was brought before council, I don't know, was it three months ago already, to do this? And we asked for 15% then, it was like, no, let's wait for the workshop. So now we're at the workshop. And now we're gonna have to wait two months, maybe three months. I just need to see some movement. Let's get to 15. And I'm, I'm cool with nuance. If there's places where we have to do 10% because it makes sense, let's do that. But 15 should be our, our starting point, so that we can get a handle on the situation, and then we can do the nuance. I'm all about it. Call for the vote?
This, and this is what I'm concerned about, this is what the state did. We need, we have a housing crisis, we need to do it now, and it has been an abysmal failure at the state level. I want everyone, I want to be clear, and I want to make sure the mayor and I are on the same page, that if we do 15%, we are gonna raise density outside, we're gonna raise density in single-family neighborhoods on these density bonus projects. We're gonna force them to go. Cyclops Farms and Avocado will be more units on those projects going forward. That's the fact. And so that is my concern, that's why I'm not gonna support that.
No, what I heard from staff is that you can have two, you can have the 10% in residential and 15% outside of, I mean, single-family residential and 15% outside of that. Is that correct, Mr. Borrego? Is that what you said?
I was told by our housing director that there are cities that do bifurcate. And so if, if that was a direction given by council tonight, that's what we would study.
I think that would be...
If nothing else is an option.
I think that that would really address this issue. Because the, the density bonus in neighborhoods is used, it doesn't really create any affordable housing. It's one or two. That's it. Councilmember Weiss. Okay. Councilmember Joyce?
I just wanna be clear.
Would you bifurcate, would you ask, would you allow staff to bifurcate in terms of single-family residential versus other?
Well, you know, do we...
Regarding the 15%?
Let's take a look at Ocean Creek, is that the one that passed not too long ago?
I should say...
What zoning was that in?
That was a multifamily zone project. So the examples would, well, it's commercial that allows for mixed use. But, you know, what we're talking about here is along the lines of Cyclops Farms and Grand View Estates. And obviously, you're aware of the project out on Guahomi Lake Road as well. Those are the types of projects that we're referring to.
So...
You know, it's only one or two more units at 15%.
Okay. I will amend my motion to include 10% for single-family neighborhoods. And 15 for multiple. And 15 for everything else.
Okay. I'll second that. And, and...
Thank you for the suggestion, Deputy Mayor Kyrm.
Keeping, keeping your comments regarding the study. Okay. Ryan?
So I wanna make sure we get, if Councilmember Weiss can revisit it, to make these successful, you have to adjust the density bonus in the areas it's supposed to be. That's why it's, so if we're gonna do that, we have to, it has to include his.
It's in the study, it's in the study. There's a motion and a second, if we're ready to vote on this.
Call for the vote.
Let's vote. Yay. Next, recommendation.
That was actually your last recommendation.
Okay, and now we have other direction we'd like to give to staff. Council, Councilmember Joyce?
So we saw short-term rentals come up, and I've heard it from a couple of different members of the council and the mayor. So I would like staff to bring back something for us to limit the encroachment of STRs, especially in short-term rentals, especially in our neighborhoods. I trust staff to come back with a range of different options. I do have a question. If we go down this road, I'm worried that we're gonna get flooded with applications tomorrow. So is there a way that we can put a moratorium on granting new applications before we see this come back to us?
Mr. Mullin?
Well, that would be an urgency ordinance, and so we'd have to put forth an urgency ordinance, which requires a supermajority vote of the council. It would require, it should be renewed after a certain time period. I think we could put an ordinance together pretty quickly. It depends on what, really, the council is looking at. If it were gonna be banning future STR permits on properties that don't have them now, outside of the coastal zone, I would not anticipate a flood. And I think we could, we could put that amendment together in, in short order.
So it would be a ban on, on, on short-term vacation rentals outside of the coastal zone? Is that what you said?
Well, I'm not making the motion, but I wanna be clear with...
I know, you were, give me as an example.
Assuming, for sake of argument, it is a prohibition on future STRs outside of the coastal zone in single-family neighborhoods, that would be a relatively straightforward amendment, and I think we could expedite, my office certainly could, preparation of that.
Well, I would make that as a motion. Councilmember Weiss?
Can you repeat, can you repeat it again? What would be the motion, Councilmember Weiss?
Banning short-term vacation rentals in single-family neighborhoods outside of the coastal zone.
And what I heard was new, new permits.
New permits.
If you have an existing permit, then you'd maintain that under this proposal?
And this would go into possibly a cap, possibly when those permits come out, then we would not renew a new permit in that space if it's in a single-family neighborhood? That's the ban?
I mean, if, if someone has one now, how long is it good for?
A year.
Oh.
So I had asked questions about this, and in terms of giving, like, I, I know there are folks who are, I mean, especially, I guess there's two kinds. There's, there's people coming in and buying the property and turning it into it, or just existing housing and turning it into short-term rental. Both have the same effect of taking out critical housing stock. Because I will say, we have not, our population has not increased, and yet I've never seen the rents this crazy, the vacancy rate so low, and people just really in crisis mode. So how can we address this as cleanly as possible? I did ask staff, well, what would it take to get these units phased out? Would it take some time? Would it take five years, seven years, whatever? And I understand that perhaps, for those that have existing homes, probably not any kind of new investments that were put in there. But for those who buy the property for that reason, there may be a taking issue. So I would like to get staff to look at that and see what, what can we do to get some of those units back. But for sure, do the ban so that we can at least finally have, stabilize the situation for, for our, our communities.
My office can work with the city manager's office to prepare an ordinance to kind of stop the bleeding, for lack of a better term.
Thank you.
And then address the long-term consequences in that staff report.
All right. Councilmember Robinson?
Okay, I think you just answered my question, Mr. Mullin. That, what we're talking about is a temporary thing, not a permit, until staff comes back with a report, correct?
No, it's not. It is a, an ordinance to ban the issuance of new short-term rental permits in single-family neighborhoods outside of the coastal zone. I think the open question is, what do you do with respect to the, was it 200 or so STRs that are, have already been issued? And we could provide some policy recommendations for that when we come back.
See, I, I believe the discussion started with you were worried about some flood of applicants, and now we've made this permanent decision without staff being able to give us a recommendation, and I'm not gonna support it.
No, no. No, we haven't made any decisions. So they would be, they would be doing a temporary, and they would bring back an ordinance for us to review on the further, on preventing the furtherance of this into neighborhoods. So two parts, right? A temporary moratorium...
What I've heard is you don't want short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods outside the coastal zone.
Right.
Not temporary, but permanent. And then you have to deal with, what do we, what, as a policy matter, what do you wanna do with the permits that have already been issued?
And I guess we wanna know what we can do.
You could either leave them, or you could reduce them through a lottery or some other process.
I'm sorry, I'm not called on yet.
Okay. Councilmember Joyce?
So a couple of things. One is, what comes back to us, I think, should also not just be focused on single-family neighborhoods, because we're looking at housing right now, and our housing is multifamily, what we're building is all multifamily neighborhoods. So I think we need to, that needs to be part of the conversation that comes back. So my motion would be to have staff come back with options to limit the encroachment of short-term rentals in the housing supply. And I think, I trust staff to come up with, if that's enough for staff.
Honorable Mayor and Council, just so I'm clear, and that, that's housing stock outside the coastal zone?
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
So, so that is, just to be clear, is west of I-5, right?
The coastal zone actually, it doesn't extend quite to I-5. It actually essentially extends to Coast Highway, a little bit beyond that, and then up some of the waterways, so...
Right, right, right.
So is that enough information, though?
Yes, I think the only clarification I would need for the motion is whether we're talking about single-family and multifamily, or just single-family.
I think you could bring back options.
We can do that.
Okay. Are there any questions about the proposal? All right. So that's a motion.
I'll go ahead and second it. There's a motion and a second, no other lights. Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Robinson, no.
Thank you, and that. Any other recommendations anyone wants to make? Councilmember Weiss?
In regards to the inclusionary discussion we had, I'd like to propose that for single-family projects, that we would allow ADUs to count as the inclusionary units. We currently do not. So I'll make that as a motion.
Councilmember Joyce?
So can we have a little bit of explanation from staff on how that would impact? So we're, we're talking about, they would, they would include a, a plan for an ADU as they're building the new? That means it would have to be, but we don't manage the, we don't, do we, we would have to monitor it, though, as an ADU? We'd have to monitor that the occupants are under rent restriction?
I think we did this once, the conversation was about the main house and the ADU, and we preferred to have the main house as the affordable, affordable project. Was that what it was?
I think, Mayor, I believe that that conversation was in the context of the Grand View project, which you initially denied. I think the applicant did propose that, and then it was reformatted and came back and approved as an alternative. But we did look at, in the most recent amendments to the inclusionary housing ordinance, allowing more flexibility for the, the affordable unit to be not exactly the same as the market rate unit.
I thought it was the one that was up on Fire Mountain, right?
That is it.
Okay, that was it. Okay.
If, so...
So they just switched the units, right?
If they build it, and there's a, there's an ADU there, and it just never gets rented because the person that owns the house doesn't want everyone to rent it out to somebody? I mean...
I think we would require some type of restriction, would we not? A covenant that would go with the land?
There would have to be a regulatory agreement, just like any other project.
So they would rent it to their...
Does the agreement...
Adult child, I guess.
But does it include that it's on like a public, some way that people know it's for rent, where they can't be denying people that are applying for, I mean, there's just, there's, there's no oversight in this space at all. I'm not saying it's the wrong thing, I'm just trying to understand how it functionally is different than doing an affordable unit that's by itself.
I'd actually like to see a study in like, what other cities do with that, and what are the, you know, what ends up happening if, if they actually do end up being rented out as affordable units? Councilmember Robinson?
I just wanna second the motion.
Councilmember Joyce?
So this would come back to us to vote on later? This is a new policy?
I, I really wanna see how it works elsewhere.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, we can certainly include that analysis when we bring the ordinance back for consideration.
Okay.
But if, if the motion were to pass, the motion was to allow them to be used. And so we could, if that passes, we draft a specific amendment to Chapter 14C, because that's where we talk about the characteristics of the reserved unit.
But I, I do want to make sure that we have a study on this, because if it doesn't make sense, and then they really do not get rented out as low-income units available to the community, then this is, this, then we're not really building affordable units. Sir, is, can, Mr. Borrego? Ms. Heinz?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, there were some, there was some discussion between Director Heinz and myself regarding the fact that those allowances for ADUs may already be allowed somewhat in our existing inclusionary housing ordinance as an add-on, as part of the last amendment?
No. It's, it's, I have reviewed that, though. It's not, it was definitely discussed, but the specific language did not make its way into 14C.
Okay.
So there was definitely flexibility granted and discretion to the director to determine if a unit qualified, but it didn't specifically say an ADU could be counted.
So as, getting back to the original question, is when we bring the ordinance back for consideration, we would include an analysis that suggests how other cities are doing this, because we wouldn't be unique. I know other cities do allow ADUs to be used as part of the inclusionary fulfillment.
And, and we're talking about, this is just for, for sale units? Single family.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the city council, I believe the motion made by Councilmember Weiss was, in conjunction with a density bonus project in a single-family neighborhood, that the affordable units, the income-restricted unit, could be an ADU.
Right. So, and I guess that, that takes away the ability for someone that have moderate, you know, with moderate income, to be able to buy a unit, because at that point, I mean, are they really for sale at that point? The ADUs to, because the whole intention of including moderate is to, for, for the ability to buy a home. So is that how it works in other cities, that they buy that, the ADU as basically, such as, you know, some kind of townhome situation, what, because they share a, a wall? Because I think then you're just taking away that opportunity to, to buy a home.
So Mayor Sanchez, as you well know, the moderate, for density bonus projects... So, Mayor Sanchez, as you well know, the moderate, for density bonus projects, to utilize the moderate income category has to be a for-sale product. This could be only applied to projects that utilize very low or low-income category to qualify for the density bonus. So, we could add that language into the ordinance.
Okay. So, these units would be for rent? All the units?
Well, there would be a primary unit that could be owned by somebody, and the ADU, which would be the income-restricted unit, could be rented out. If it was a moderate-income category project, which we haven't seen any in our city, those could be, would have to all be required to be for sale.
And in the, in the ones that we did approve, in terms of there being ADUs, what did we decide to do? Did we, did we actually give, allocate the affordable unit as the main, as a main unit?
That's correct, Mayor Sanchez.
And that was for ownership or for rent?
They could be made available for ownership. I think the problem we're having is that a lot of developers utilize the very-low-income category, and that very-low income, it's very, very, very difficult for a family that would qualify income-wise to be able to purchase and gain a mortgage. And so, what we're running into is, the handful of projects that have included very-low-income category, single-family homes, in some instances, the developers having to hold them instead of sell them, and they're going to have to hold them for a period of 55 years until that affordability restriction runs out.
Right.
Mayor, there actually is a reference in 14(c) that was added last time. It doesn't appear in the section that discusses the characteristics of the reserved unit, but it is further down, after the dedication of land section. It does say that accessory dwelling units constructed to satisfy an inclusionary housing requirement shall be rent-restricted to affordable rental rates, and renters shall be income-qualified and in compliance with requirements of 14(c)(5) to be specified in the affordable housing agreement. And the ADU shall not be used as reserved credits available as an alternative to satisfy an inclusionary requirement of another applicant. So, there is an allowance, in part, in that section for it right now.
So, we already have it in 14(c)?
So, I think it probably suffices. It doesn't, it is not specific to, I think, what the motion was with regard to inclusionary on density bonus projects in single-family neighborhoods, but if that's the policy of the council, I think we could implement that. Because there is an allowance for it in general in the code, it's just a matter of implementation.
Peter, is that, is that good enough for you?
Yes, I think so. I'm voting in that direction.
Okay, there's no other, there's no other comments?
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Joyce?
The intent of this is to make it so that these kinds of projects can pencil out in the single-family neighborhoods? I'm just curious about the intent generally.
I think part of it is just what you heard, that the, to build a single-family house for very-low or low-income people, that they're not getting people in them. So, you build the house, do the ADU, and get it as a rental, and at least provide some affordable housing, versus some developer sitting with an empty house for 55 years.
I actually think that there are plenty of folks on moderate incomes who would jump at the chance of buying a unit.
Not if it was restricted as a very-low-income unit? Or a low-income unit?
No, moderate, moderate, which is what, so I have some concerns about that. Did you want to say one more thing?
No, I just, I have concerns, too. I want to learn more about it, I'll support the motion so we can come back and talk about it fully.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Was, there was a second, right? Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Okay. Any other motions? Councilmember Joyce?
So, one that I brought up before, and I've talked with staff about, so I think they know it's coming. I'm really, when we see new projects come through, I always have the question about, we hear it doesn't pencil, we hear about how costly it is to add affordable units. I would like to propose a change to our code that requires developers to give us the price to upgrade a market-rate unit to an affordable unit. Is that something that we can do?
I'm sorry, say again?
So, this would be, we receive a project, within their project application, they would, they would give us a price for upgrading a unit from a market-rate unit to an affordable unit.
So, I'll take a stab at that. Again, SB 330 sets forth what information we can request in a development application with great specificity, and it's very clear that we cannot add to or subtract from that list. And so, I think the answer to your question is, with respect to most projects that are going to be coming through that have SB 330 preliminary applications, the answer's no. What you should know, though, for perhaps non-SB 330 projects, our inclusionary housing ordinance already has a provision in it that allows a developer with the initial planning application, the first discretionary application, to request a subsidy and to provide exactly that information, how much it would cost to reserve more than the minimum number of units. So, for example, if you go to 15%, and you want to know, how much would it cost to go to 16%? The developer has the ability right now to disclose that if they're requesting a subsidy, and to provide the information necessary for staff to evaluate that. I think you're asking, can you mandate it? And I would just question, if we only require 15%, and you want to know, how much is it going to cost to go to 16%? If you can't mandate that 16%, I'm not sure of what utility that information would be.
The utility would be that it'd give us the opportunity to subsidize more units, so going to 20% for them.
If that was a statutory requirement, but the requirement would still be at 15% if I understood the direction.
Of course. So, this is, the only thing I'm asking is that we mandate the information so that we have the choice to include more affordable housing in these larger projects that are coming forward.
And maybe a way to get there is, you know, certainly SB 330 would not allow you to do that.
Correct.
But for the non-SB 330 projects, perhaps, we could make the application more prominent as, and have a specific section in the application to address that issue.
Well, we've had them, we've had them in front of us before and asked, and they don't have the answers. So, they weren't ready for it the last time. We're mandating the information. This would be a mandate on understanding what's coming before us. The 330, no, but then they do have to submit a full application, 180 days later, or within 180 days, is that what it was?
Consistent with the preliminary application.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, we're not asking them to change anything about their project. We just want to know that if we wanted to upgrade some of these units, or rent-restrict some of these units, how much would they charge us to do that?
And, but they could say, I don't want to upgrade any of them. If the ordinance only requires 15%, and we say, we want you to go to 20, but our ordinance says 15, they could say, I don't want your subsidy.
And then we say, I hear you, but we're going to offer you this money, would you be a doll and include more affordable units in this project?
I've never met a doll.
And some of them might say, hey, I'd like to do business here in Oceanside later, maybe that'd be a great idea for me.
Yeah, I just haven't seen it done before, and I don't think it could be done under 330. I think we'd probably want to do some additional research into that to see if any other agency has done that. I don't know that as I sit here, but, but I do want you to know, we do have that in 14(c) right now.
If they want to take advantage of that.
Right, I just...
If it became an active practice, where we are now helping out with this requirement, then maybe it becomes a more active practice. So, I'd like to make a motion that we get some more information about that.
Councilmember Robinson?
I sound so tired when you say that. I get what you're trying to do, I'm not, I can't support it right now, because I, those, that information doesn't come without a cost to the developer and builder, and we're asking it just, or demanding it, because we might do something. I would just say, if, on the application piece, if there was something that was voluntary, if they wanted to add in there, I don't know, but I don't think it's right to mandate something that costs them something to do, and it's just because we may want to do something with it.
I can promise you that they know how much it costs for a unit to be affordable versus not. I don't think they'll do any extra work, other than just handing over the information.
Councilmember Joyce, did you want to say anything else? Okay. Councilmember Weiss?
I would just say, we've just spent almost all of the in-lufy money on the NOFA, there's not going to be any money left to give them. But if you look, just the comment I made earlier, just John Seymour's project, they're at half a million to build, per unit. And if it's other, and the maximum sales price for a low-income housing unit is $200,000, so you're at a $300,000 to $400,000 gap for each unit. So, there's your basic math.
Times 55 years.
I'm sure it'll be a little more detailed than that, but...
All right. I don't hear a second. So, and I don't see any other lights on for more direction to staff. Councilmember Joyce?
Last one, promise. Okay, we heard a lot tonight about, about what we had going, and the impetus for this original housing workshop included a lot, and there was a lot of things that we didn't talk to, talk to at all. The displacement issues that we're hearing from our constituents. I think we need to look at what protections are in place, how we can better support residents and seeking them. We hear people getting kicked out constantly about rents going up way too high, and there's no recourse, because the situation is so unbalanced. So, I would like us to eventually have a conversation about what protections are renters, which is 41% of our city, and many of whom pay over 50% of their income to just stay in that house, month to month. I'd like to know what kind of things the city could do to protect them from being moved out, and from the greed of overutilizing their houses. So, that, my motion would be for us to have an item about renters' protections.
So, I think we could just let staff know we want to see that.
Yeah, if we have support.
If it's more than four hours. Honorable mayor and council members, I think from staff's perspective, we would want a council concurrence on that one, because that is a very heavy lift for us.
Deputy Mayor, Kim?
We, I am, again, I'm going to get concerned, we think we forget about unintended consequences, we want to do all these good things so fast, that California has some of the strictest landlord-tenant laws around. I've worked with them very closely, and, again, these are, we forget, we, I think we demonize landlords, a lot of the landlords are mom-and-pop landlords, who have one or two houses, and it's a challenge, but I know we want to, I know we want to do good and get, keep people in houses, prevent homelessness, but every, everything we do has unintended consequences, and we have to be very cautious. I'm not going to second that.
I'm asking for us to just have a conversation about what we can do. And you can weigh the consequences yourself, when we actually have a real conversation, and not a theoretical conversation about all the things that we're demonizing landlords on.
So, Ms. Hines, what do other cities do to try to help residents who are facing consequences of a very, very tight rental situation? And we've heard a lot of stories from refusing to sign a one-year lease, and I understand that the protection there, the state, the state passed a law that says you can only have one increase per year, right? What can cities do to, to help address some of these issues?
So, there's a lot of work going on in this arena of displacement. Sandag just completed a study, I don't know that it's published yet, on displacement or risk of displacement. You saw the city of Chilavista in the last couple of years pass some pro-tenant protections, and then more recently, the city of San Diego has passed some tenant protections related to what the state already has in place for just cause evictions and rent control, and then just going just a little bit above and beyond that.
Well, I would like to see what other cities do, and present them to us for discussion, if that's what the motion is. So, I'll second that motion. No other lights. Let's vote on this.
Kim, no.
Okay. So, let's, do we have any other motions? Because we have one more item. Okay, well, now you can clap, okay, because we're done with that part. Thank you. Thank you all for coming and for staying to the very, very end. We do have public comments on non-agendized items. How many do we have people who still want to talk to us? I hope, I hope it's not too many.
Jimmy Naught is still here? Candy Johnson is not here? Vince Lockney?
Is not here.
Not here? Wendy Bravadolin, do you still want to talk tonight? I don't, she's gone? Okay. Joan Bachman, are you still here?
Do you still want to speak?
All right, Mr. Naught?
Looking at the hour, I want to ask for two minutes. All right.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127, Sherri Lane. What I want to talk about to let you know is that the rebate program that's going on needs to be looked at, because we have a lot of outside-the-city teams that are not necessarily knowing what the reality is, and it's not being reflected. I talked to some surfers who are telling me, there's a second underwater trench that's pulling sand that the teams do not know about. Also, there's a need for a video to show what the status of the underwater levels are, and different things that are out there that was not shared with the public, both surface and subsurface, as well as seasonal changes into it. And then also, what was missing in the presentations was the existing conditions and potential climate change and those effects onto the actual shorelines. That was not given as well. And these are things that outside-the-city groups may not have as their understanding before they do the presentations. I think they need to be informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Bachman, followed by Natalie Gonzalez, is Natalie here? Followed by Beau? Okay, so Natalie is no longer here. Go ahead, Joan.
Okay, as I walked down here tonight, thinking I might walk back in the daylight, but that's not going to happen, but I have a super, super moon to let...
That's right, it's full moon.
Yes, tonight. In our neighborhood, we're constantly losing trees, they're not being replaced. We just lost an oak tree because they put pots under it, and palms, and irrigation, and they actually killed it. It was older than the house and, and the people. And we always talk about a tree plan, we have a very hard-working arborist, we have departments that try very hard, but we need, we need to do better. We need a goal, we need a tree succession plan for every bit of plantable space that has actual canopy trees, we need tree replacements for every pretty worthless palm tree, they don't count for climate change, and they have to go to the dump, they can't be composted. So, we really need teeth in a tree succession plan, it needs to cover all plantable areas, all parkways, and we need to get that as soon as possible, with the goal of planting 100 trees a year, a month, a day, I don't care, 100 at some point, and let's stick to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Beau?
I have three things I want to talk about. The first one is, you know, how we might implement increasing density. More housing for the same developer dollar. Let's think about unbundling parking. We can fit four e-bikes, or, or, you know, mobility scooters, or four other mobility devices in the same space it takes to fit one parked car. 75% saving in space, that means we can put more units in the same volume, so density bonus means more units on these larger projects. And then, you can use that extra space for quality-of-life improvements. In larger buildings, you need to have common spaces, maybe you can... In larger buildings, you need to have common spaces, maybe community gardens, things like that, that make it more livable for, say, children or the next generation. And then the next one, on the affordable housing stuff, you need to think about two headlines. On October 19th, 2022, Bloomberg reports, quote, "RealPage Incorporated and a major landlord are facing federal antitrust litigation in San Diego." And as of January 10th, 2023, Reuters reports, "The fight is on for control of the RealPage antitrust litigation," and I think we should consider maybe if there's that kind of anti-competitive price fixing going on in the city and maybe propose an alternative for what might be realistic, given what we want to occur in Oceanside. Like, what would be fair? What's a fair number to rent for? And then the last item I want to talk about is, "I want boats to be at the end of the pier again. It was built for boats. It's the longest wooden pier on the West Coast, activating the harbor..."
Thank you very much there. Thank you. Anyone else? Are we done? Oh, okay. Then we are adjourned to, and I already put it away, to, is it September 13th? September, okay, we are adjourned to the next council meeting, which is September 13th at 3:30. Thank you.